Good afternoon, good afternoon. Welcome to the New York City Council hearing on the Committees on Parks and Recreation, joint with Contracts. At this time, please silence all electronics and do not approach your dais. I repeat, please do not approach your dais. If you have any questions or are testifying, please see a sergeant at arms. Chairs, you may begin.
Thank you so much, Sergeant. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, Chair of the City Council's Committee on Parks and Recreation. I'd like to thank my colleague and co-chair of this hearing, Councilmember Julie Wong, Chair of the Contracts Committee, for agreeing to hold this joint hearing. Today's hearing is has one today's hearing has one simple question, which is, why are taxpayers on the hook paying for city services from companies that have been convicted of fraud and other illegal actions? When we talk about cutting government waste, inefficiencies, cost-saving measures, this seems like a glaring example of a place to start. I'd like to welcome you all to our hearing that will examine how the Parks Department administers its contracts with various vendors, specifically how it relates to how it engages with and oversees problematic vendors. In order for parks to perform its duties of maintenance throughout the park system, it employs thousands of individuals to carry out these functions. However, a large part of this work is performed by private individuals or entities with contracts with parks to do this work, such as capital project construction and various forms of tree maintenance, such as planting, removal, and routine maintenance. The amount of money spent through this process is not trivial. During the most recent complete fiscal year FY25, parks had 284 contracts with a total contract budget of just under $69 million. The amount of resources that goes into parks contracting shows how reliant the park system is on the performance of private entities. However, over the years, it has become apparent that numerous contractors have behaved unethically and illegally, resulting in unnecessary stress to the health of our parks, trees, and wasted taxpayer dollars. For example, in 2023, Dragon Eddie Brothers Landscaping was awarded $40 million in tree service contracts in Queens and Brooklyn. This was after two of its principals pled guilty to insurance fraud and filing false instruments regarding other city contracts. As a result, the city initially suspended work on their contract, but the Parks Department argued that they were prohibited from rebidding or terminating the contract to another bidder. This resulted in delays to pruning city trees in Brooklyn and Queens for nearly a year. The Parks Department eventually allowed Dragon Eddie to resume their work after Dragon Eddie agreed to enter into a monitorship under the Department of Investigation. Similarly, another vendor, Champion Electrical Mechanical Builder Group, was found to have falsified payroll records and committed over $200,000 in wage theft on a Parks Department forestry contract in Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten Island. After investigation by the Controller's Office, Champion agreed to pay $295,900 in back wages and civil penalties, and they are now banned from working on city contracts for five years. Most recently, on January 22, 2025, the Parks Department awarded Griffin Landscaping Corporation a contract for tree planting in the Bronx for over $20 million. On June 11, 2025, Glenn Griffin, the company's owner, was sentenced to two years in prison for bribing a town of Portland employee to gain unauthorized access to a facility so he could illegally dump loads of construction waste. Following these indictments, DPR put all pending and active contracts with Griffin on hold, but they allowed Griffin to resume work recently when Griffin agreed to various reform efforts, such as establishing a code of conduct and retaining a DOI integrity monitor. The issue here is that despite these various illegal and unethical acts, these firms were allowed to continue performing their city contracts. The Parks Department claims that there are very few other responsible bidders that are able to perform this work in a satisfactory manner. In other words, the Parks Department's rationale has been these corporations with million-dollar contracts engaging in serious fraud and other illegal actions are too big to fail. And that is not an acceptable response, especially when it comes to the payment of required city services. And it seems to be an unnecessary excuse by forcing the city to accept unethical behavior and not engage in greater efforts to reach out to more vendors that are no doubt capable of doing the work that the Parks Department does and requires. In other words, if it be if it is true that the pool is too small, such that these corporations with serious convictions and in federal indictments are too big to fail, then it's the pool itself that is the problem, and we need to expand it to incorporate more vendors that can do this work. I think the process that oversees and awards contracts to these types of vendors needs reform. Many of my council colleagues and I and advocacy groups, from labor unions to parks advocacy groups, have urged the Parks Department to immediately halt all future street tree planting contracts with Griffin for the duration of DOI's monitorship. Instead, these contracts should be redirected by parks to qualified bidders who maintain ethical business practices. Additionally, the Parks Department should initiate a comprehensive review of the procurement process that allowed these contracts to be awarded in the first place and implement enhanced vetting procedures to prevent the awarding of future contracts to firms with histories of criminality or other unethical practices. Finally, the Parks Department should cease using companies with DOI monitorships when there are competent alternative bidders on the same projects that are not under an independent monitorship. The harm caused by engaging with unethical contractors is not an academic one. We can see clearly with the lack of maintenance to our trees, parks, and other infrastructure that results from vendors who can't ethically perform their duties. It has a major impact on the services across the city. In the end, the taxpayers are the ones who have to shoulder a greater and greater burden, and public safety is put at risk for neglected infrastructure. We can and we must do better, and I look forward in this hearing to exploring this issue in greater detail today and to hearing what this administration and advocates think about how we can reform this process. Thank you all, and welcome to today's hearing. And I do want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmembers Julie Menon and Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse. And on virtual, not yet, okay. And I'll turn it over to my co-chair of the hearing, Councilmember Julie Wong.
Thank you so much, Chair Krishnan. I also do want to acknowledge that Lincoln Ressler is also here, just right there.
He's thinking.
You just can't see him yet, but he's here. Thank you so much, Chair Krishnan, for initiating this hearing and for your leadership on this critical issue. My name is Julie Wong, and I have the privilege of chairing the Council's Committee on Contracts. As Chair Krishnan mentioned, today's hearing examines the Parks Department's contracting practices on the accountability of its vendors, with a particular focus on how problematic contractors continue receiving contracts, especially those with criminal history. We hope to discuss several troubling cases today, including the $40 million contract awarded to Dragon Eddie Brothers Landscaping despite the company's insurance fraud convictions, the $25 million in new awards to Griffin Landscaping while its owner serves federal prison time for bribery, and Champion Electrical's delayed debarment despite numerous cases of documented wage theft from as far as 2016. It is now the year 2025. The scale and severity of these failures reflect the enormous challenge of ensuring vendor responsibility across New York City's $20 billion annual procurement system. The Griffin Landscaping case alone involves a company maintaining $15 million in active contracts and receiving $25 million in new awards even after the owner's guilty plea to federal charges. While DOI's integrity monitoring program attempts to provide some degree of oversight, several questions remain about why a slap under risk monitoring agreement is used instead of an outright debarment for contractors with criminal convictions. I'm particularly concerned about how citywide procurement issues seem to be repeatedly manifest themselves within the Parks Department. There is what appears to be a pattern of failed oversight, with 47% of parks projects not completed by its vendors on time, which results in $13 million additional dollars cost to the city paid by taxpayer dollars. This suggests there are systemic issues in how the Parks Department verifies contractor responsibility before awarding public funds. We also need to examine whether procurement current procurement policy board rules provide enough in the way of enforcement mechanisms when agencies fail to properly vet contractors. For example, Dragon Eddie Brothers were debarred from the Department of Design and Construction, but the Parks Department continues to award them major tree services contracts. Are our existing rules capable of preventing contractors banned by one agency from simply moving their operations to another? If not, this loophole needs to be fixed. In short, we want to know why it seems that a vendor must be convicted criminals to plant trees for the city of New York. That's a pretty bad common denominator to have. The bottom line is that these aren't just administrative oversights. They represent millions in taxpayer dollars going to companies that have defrauded municipalities, violated labor laws, and committed environmental crimes. Property owners and residents depend on reliable contractors to maintain our parks and trees. When we award contracts to companies with criminal records instead of responsible vendors, we failed our communities twice, first through poor service and second by rewarding bad actors. Today, we have an opportunity to examine these critical procurement failures and ensure our contracting strategies protect public integrity while meeting the city's operational needs. Both committees look forward to hearing from the Parks Department, as well as MOX, about how we can structure accountability mechanisms to prevent problematic contractors from exploiting gaps in our procurement system and making profit. Before we begin, I would like to thank the committee staff, Senior Counsel Alex Polenoff, Policy Analyst Alex Gablon, Financial Analyst Owen Keltowski, as well as my Chief of Staff Nick Goloda, my Legislative and Budget Director Nelly Vera Martinez, and Constitution Services Liaison Keisong Youngso, and my Standing Comms Director Farah Salam for their hard work in putting together today's hearing. I'll now turn it over to Committee Counsel to administer the oath.
Thanks so much, Chair Wong. And just really quick, we also have members have joined on Zoom, Councilmember Aung, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Holden, and Councilmember Palladino.
Thank you, chairs. Would representatives of the administration please raise your right hand if you're able? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before these committees and to respond to honest to question to Councilmember questions honestly?
I do.
Thank you.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Wong, Chair Krishnan, members of the Committee on Contracts, the Committee on Parks and Recreation, and other council members. Thank you for taking the time to hold this important hearing today on the topic of contracting practices and vendor accountability. My name is John Katsouris, and I serve as the Deputy City Chief Procurement Officer at the Mayor's Office of Contract Services. I'm joined by MOX's First Deputy Director Gesenya Markland and MOX's General Counsel Ray Sanchez, as well as our colleagues from the Department of Parks and Recreation. As many of you know, MOX is an oversight agency dedicated to ensuring compliance with the city's procurement rules and leading reform initiatives to improve the city's procurement processes. This responsibility grants MOX a wide purview over procurement. We implement technology select solutions to bring the process into the digital era, lead investigative advocacy efforts to keep the procurement rules in step with modern practices, provide hands-on support for agencies and vendors to eliminate procurement delays, and provide strategic consultation to improve procurement outcomes for city agencies and the millions of New Yorkers they serve. With nearly $42 billion in procurement value for fiscal year 2025, we are keenly aware that the city's contracting portfolio prevents a target for abuse. And we are continuously continuously seeking ways to safeguard and ensure the responsible use of taxpayer dollars. A core component of this work involves reviewing agency solicitations and contractors for risk, supporting agencies in remedial actions necessary to mitigate those risks, and implementing safeguards to protect against waste, fraud, and abuse. We leverage all available tools to ensure that city contracts and the taxpayer money that funds them are awarded only to responsible vendors. In this regard, MOX fits within a broad framework of risk prevention and assessment based on practices and protocols that have been developed over decades. Through collaborative work across oversight and risk management agencies, including the Mayor's Office of Risk Management and Compliance, or MORMIC, and the Department of Investigation, or DOI, we continue to develop frameworks for preventing and detecting abuses of the procurement system. The Department of Parks and Recreation conducts high volume of procurements with broad base of vendors, and incidents requiring significant oversight intervention or risk mitigation measures have been few and far between. In fiscal year 2025, the department procured a combined 1,811 capital and expense contracts with 601 unique vendors. As those figures indicate, the number of contractors with integrity or performance issues are extreme outliers when compared to the total number of vendors that the department conducts business with overall. This comes no to no surprise to MOX and is a testament to the effectiveness of the city's oversight and control mechanisms, including the department's sound judgment in conducting vendor responsibility determinations. With regard to citywide contracting practices, the Procurement Policy Board rules guide and govern the action of all city contracting agencies and vendors seeking to do business with the city. As a foundational principle of city contracting, the rules mandate that agencies make only purchases from and award contracts to responsible vendors. A responsible vendor is one that affirmatively demonstrates having, and I quote, "the capability in all respects to perform fully the contract requirements and the business integrity to justify the award of public tax dollars," end quote. However, it must be noted and emphasized that this is the policy of the city that vendors are not subject to debarment, except in very limited circumstances prescribed by state law. This is explicitly explicitly stated in the PBB rules following the revisions made to the charter. Any discussion of utilizing debarment would need serious consideration of constitutional and due process rights, among other significant concerns regarding equity and ensuring the continuation of critical operations and services. To ensure that this standard is met in all contracting actions, the rules require all agencies to complete a vendor responsibility determination before awarding them a contract. The responsibility determination is a holistic assessment which must be completed on a contract by contract basis. The rules provide a non-exhaustive list of factors that an agency may consider when making a responsibility determination. Factors affecting a vendor's responsibility may include the vendor's financial resources, technical qualifications, experience, capacity to carry out the work demanded by the contract, a satisfactory record of performance, and the vendor's business integrity, among others. A prospective contractor need not be perfect to be deemed responsible. The responsibility determination serves, among other purposes, to apprise the agency of the potential risks inherent in contracting with the vendor and enables the city to proactively implement reasonable risk mitigation plans, including monitoring agreements and corrective action plans as appropriate. Part of the business integrity assessment involves a review of the vendor's disclosures in Passport. All prospective city contractors are required to have accurate and up-to-date disclosures in Passport prior to being awarded a contract with the city. Passport disclosures are comprised of the vendor questionnaire and the and principal questionnaires. These disclosures provide pertinent information regarding the vendor's business, as well as their principles, managerial employees, and affiliates. Certain questions in the questionnaire are designed to generate a flag based on the vendor's response. If the information is provided by a vendor in response to such a question that generates a flag, those disclosures are not finalized until MOX reviews the disclosures for completeness. If the vendor's disclosure responses do not generate a flag, then the disclosures are automatically filed. In addition to review of the vendor's passport disclosures, the agency also reviews the vendor's passport profile for any cautions. Cautions amount to flags that detail which an agency may wish to consider when conducting any sort of vetting, including as part of the agency vendor responsibility determination process. Cautions may be sourced in a variety of ways. First, cautions may be created based on a vendor's self-disclosure in responding to certain flag generating questions in the vendor questionnaire and principal questionnaires. In these instances, Passport will generate a caution based on the vendor's disclosure, which MOX will review and finalize. Second, the MOX integrity vendor integrity unit creates cautions based on a weekly review of government websites, such as the U.S. Department of Justice, New York Attorney General's websites for announcements of investigations, lawsuits, settlements, convictions, and other information pertaining to vendors and/or their principles in Passport. Third, agencies may initiate a caution on a vendor, which is reviewed and approved by the MOX vendor integrity unit. Alternatively, agencies may submit a caution request to MOX, and the MOX vendor integrity unit will create the caution on the agency's behalf. As stated in the MOX Directive for Standardizing Vendor Integrity Information, agencies are expected to review all relevant cautions prior to completing a responsibility determination. The determination must include an explanation as to why the existence of a caution or adverse information should not act as a barrier to contracting with the vendor. It is important to note that the emergence of adverse information regarding a city contractor is not a rare phenomenon. Between fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2025, there were a total of 959 unique vendors with cautions placed on their profiles. Of that total, the Department of Parks and Recreation reported cautions on nine individual vendors. Though cautions may significantly make signify a need for additional due diligence, they are not inherently a cause for finding of for a finding of nonresponsibility. In some cases, vendors are more significant with more significant performance or integrity issues may be required to enter into a DOI monitoring agreement or an agency corrective action plan in order to continue doing business with the city. In the period spanning fiscal years 2021 through 2025, 16 vendors were placed on DOI monitoring agreements, and 17 vendors were placed on agency corrective action plans. When these vendors demonstrate accountability and the willingness to end the ability to act in accordance with the standards of that contracting with of the standards that contracting with the city demands, particularly under increased levels of focused oversight, there is reason to allow them access to future contracting opportunities. By working collaboratively collaboratively to find solutions for these vendors, we maximize the number of vendors eligible to do business with the city and foster a more competitive environment to provide New Yorkers with the highest quality of goods and services at the lowest possible prices. Beyond the measures prescribed by the PBB rules, MOX proactively collaborates with oversight agencies to develop innovative measures to safeguard the integrity of the city's procurement and contracting processes. MOX and MORMIC have partnered to establish the Vendor Compliance Cabinet, or VCC, as a forum to support agencies by alerting them to shared concerns involving involving individual vendors and providing strategies to mitigate vendor-related risks. The VCC meets at least quarterly, providing agencies with a venue to recommend measures to address potential gaps or inconsistencies in contracts, fiscal manuals, and other key documents, and to provide feedback as responsive policies are developed and deployed. We will continue to work with our agency partners to develop additional policies and procedures to protect the integrity of the city's procurements as necessary and appropriate. Thank you for calling this hearing to bring this attention, the attention to this very important topic, and for giving us the opportunity to speak on some of the most meaningful work we do every day. I'm happy to keep the council informed on these continued efforts, and I'd now like to pass it over to my colleagues, New York City Parks, for their testimony.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Chair Krishnan, Chair Wong, members of the Parks Committee, Contracts Committee, other council members. My name is Matt Jury. I serve as the citywide Chief of Citywide Legislative Affairs for New York City Parks. Joining me, several of our senior staff, Jennifer Greenfeld, our Deputy Commissioner for Environment and Planning, Christopher Atkins, Agency Chief Contracting Officer, and Parmad Trupathy, Chief of Management Services, Agency Chief Contracting Officer. We're also very pleased to have been joined by our colleagues at the Mayor's Office of Contract Services and thank them for their help and support. Like all contracting city agencies, New York City Parks takes its responsibility as a steward of public funds very seriously. We expect that any vendors paid by the agency will adhere to relevant laws and rules and deliver the agreed-upon goods and services as dictated by the contract. We conduct all of our contracting practices in accordance with citywide rules and policies, and we work in close consultation with partners, including New York City Law Department and Mayor's Office of Contract Services, to ensure that contracts are solicited and executed appropriately. To that end, I want to provide a very brief overview of our efforts to procure both capital contracts and operational expense contracts. In fiscal year 25, our Parks Capital Division awarded 355 prime contracts totaling over $700 million to approximately 100 distinct vendors for park capital projects. Through this effort, 165 prime contractors and 929 subcontractors were determined by Parks Capital to be responsible vendors who were thoroughly vetted before being determined to exhibit the business integrity and fitness to justify the awarding of city funds. These contracts are executed so we can advance park and playground renovations and tree planting, as well as upgrades and improvements to our pools, boardwalks, athletic fields, wild natural areas, and other public spaces. Many of our capital contracts are awarded via the city's competitive sealed bid process, which generally consists of three phases, requiring involvement from numerous entities outside of the agency. The pre-solicitation phase includes reviews by the contracting agency and New York City Law Department, resulting in the creation of a contract book, which contains all the relevant information for potential bidders. The solicitation phase includes public notice about that bid opportunity and the sourcing of those bids from vendors for the required goods and services. And then the review and award phase includes the vetting of the vendors for responsibility and other detailed reviews, leading to the eventual awarding of the contract, generally made in response to the lowest bid from a responsive and responsible bidder. After the award is made, additional budgeting approvals are issued from OMB and the Comptroller. The contract is formally registered, and a notice to proceed, sometimes called an order to work, can be issued, allowing the vendor to begin work. Turning quickly to expense-funded contracts, in fiscal year 25, our purchasing and accounting team processed over 1,500 purchase orders and contracts, as well as 1,300, what we refer to as punch-out purchase orders, which are made via de-cast catalog goods contracts for common goods and services that are utilized by all city agencies, collectively totaled in payments of approximately $135 million. This universe includes approximately 100 service contracts for various vital services, including automotive repair and maintenance, elevator repair and inspections, HVAC maintenance and repair, floodlight maintenance and repair, flagpoles, fire alarm maintenance and repair, IT services, as well as tree pruning, stump and tree removal, and the treatment of tree disease. The work to proceed process these procurements include preparing, bidding solicitations, price negotiations, vendor background checks and responsibility determinations, Comptroller registration, contact administration and amendments, as well as invoice review, approvals, and payment processing. Broadly speaking, city agencies' procurement efforts are governed by numerous sources of law, New York City State General Municipal Law, New York City Charter, New York City Admin Code, local laws passed by the City Council, and rules of the Procurement Policy Board, which was created by Chapter 13 of the New York City Charter and tasked with promulgating rules related to procurement, followed by all mail agencies, including New York City Parks. Agencies such as ours conduct thorough background checks on every vendor by reviewing multiple sources of information, along with other research tools, such as databases maintained by federal and state partners and other city agencies. When a vendor set a vetting search turns up adverse information, the agency will first reach out to the vendor to address or clarify those concerns before a final responsibility determination is made. Typically, this is handled at the agency level through the provision of appropriate documentation from that vendor, for example, by providing proof of payment of an outstanding ECB, Environmental Control Board, violation penalty. In the rare instances that the adverse information is more serious in nature, agencies will consult with their agency general counsel, MOX Law Department, and the Department of Investigation to determine, as needed, to see if further corrective action might be appropriate to address those adverse findings. Though it's rarely utilized, as you've heard, in consultation with Law Department and others, the city procurement process does include mechanisms that allow for the continuation of agency contracts with a vendor that has exhibited integrity concerns if it's determined to be in the best interest of the city to do so. These mechanisms can include monitorship agreements and additional compliance requirements for the vendor. In closing, though the city's procurement process is quite complicated, New York City Parks remains committed to ensuring that contract awards are made fairly, transparency, and as quickly as possible to maintain essential services to New Yorkers. Thanks for allowing for us to testify today. Us and our colleagues at MOX will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for your testimony, both in the Parks Department and from MOX. And I also see that we have our Deputy Commissioner for Forestry here as And I also see that we have our Deputy Commissioner for Forestry here as well. Good to see you. You know, this issue is one that seems so straightforward and simple, and I think all of us in the city council genuinely want to work with you all to figure this out because it justifies logic of how we are in this position year after year. And so the first question I would just ask is, obviously, I would think the Parks Department agrees that its contract should be given out to responsible bidders, right?
Yes, and this, and the city's process includes mechanisms that were, in which various considerations can be taken into account, including, and I believe you've received written testimony from DOI explaining sort of monitorship agreements that, in more detail, so I don't want to speak for them, but that is one example of a mechanism that exists to take that into account and to address and restore integrity concerns as they exist.
And I would assume Mox agrees that city contracts should be given out to responsible bidders, correct?
Yes.
So, we have a situation now where the majority of street tree contracts are given to two contractors who are convicted of felonious actions that relate directly to the performance of their job when there are other qualified bidders to do this work. And I, you know, it's, it's the tree service and maintenance is one of the most critical and crucial issues we face in the city. Seven million trees across the city, you know, they require extensive maintenance in different ways, and yet we have, and I just want to paint the picture again, one contractor that has a contract of $20 million, Griffin Landscaping, awarded this past January despite conduct that included bid rigging and other bribery and unauthorized dumping. So, conduct that relates directly to their job responsibility, bidding, as I mentioned before, bribery, yet they hold now a new $20 million contract from the Parks Department. Then we have another company in Dragon Eddie that's got a $40 million award for tree services from the Parks Department for trees in Queens and Brooklyn, despite being convicted of insurance fraud when it came to repairing city roads and sidewalks. And because the contract was suspended and then reinstated, there were numerous delays in the provision of services. So, given that picture and the total hundreds of millions of dollars in contracts we're talking about, to, or $100 million that we're talking about, for such an important role in the Parks Department, my first question is genuinely wanting to understand, why is it the majority of tree contracts are going to two vendors that have been convicted of felony actions that directly relate to their job performance?
Firstly, I want to characterize, it's not my understanding that the awards in these case represent a majority of tree work. In fact, I don't, I don't believe it's anywhere close. I mean, stepping back, I think in terms of capital dollars, over, you know, over $700 million in contracts, and, and we are talking about sort of two instances here which have represented, as you've heard, pretty extreme outliers. So I just wanted just to, to level set in that regard. It's, you know, not to diminish
Sure.
Your concerns, but just, just wanted to set that context fairly. And I think in terms of process, again, these monitorship agreements and these arrangements that can be taken on collectively in consultation with various, you know, not taking on it any individual agencies determinations, but determinations that are made collectively by the city, include these mechanisms and have since the, since the 90s, as I understand it, to help restore some of these concerns. So though rarely utilized, they, these mechanisms are in place to address these kind of concerns when a determination is made that it's in the best interest of the city to continue that work.
And I would just also ask Mox as well, I mean, we're, we all agree that we need to have responsible bidders. So, how do bidder, companies with the history of criminal conduct, how are they qualified as responsible bidders? It's simply the DOI monitorship agreements that make them responsible. I mean, these are very, very serious charges and convictions leveled against them, again, not for unrelated actions, but directly germane to their, to their job responsibilities and the services that we would seek from them or any other company. So how is it that companies with this extensive history of criminal conduct are deemed responsible bidders by the city? What makes them responsible?
Thank you for the question, council member. What really makes the, the important part that I wanted to just bring back to my, my testimony earlier, is that determination of responsibility is actually a holistic approach and involves several different factors in making that determination. The monitoring agreements or corrective action, agency corrective action plans, whichever the, the most appropriate tool to be used would be, removes or mitigates that risk. So in, in the cases that you're speaking to, the, the mitigating actions were to remove the bad actors from that situation, which then allowed the company to continue and be considered a responsible vendor.
And, and that's, that's the extent of the, of the inquiry, is, is these remedial actions are what makes them deemed responsible at that point?
It's just one of several different components to the overall determination of responsibility.
Okay, help me understand. So, it's clear that we're using personal self-reporting to determine people's, if they're, if these contractors are responsible. So help me get a clear definition of what the city of New York determines as responsible, other than these self-reporting measures that you have. Because clearly, I think we have a different definition for what we deem responsible than the city of New York.
Chair One, I, I understand the question, or at least as I understand it, I think what you're saying is that there's two different definitions of what we consider to be responsible. I think the cities, it, it's my understanding that the city's position on responsibility is something that we know that the, the vendor that we're preparing to award public tax dollars for has the ability to perform and has, and the city has taken every step it can to mitigate any risks before awarding public dollars.
Self-reporting is not taking every single step respond, to make sure that vendors are responsible, and for the city to believe that $40 million contracts awarded to a landscaper who has insurance fraud, fraud convictions, $25 million to a landscaper who serves federal prison time and bribery, and also another contractor that was delayed to abarment for several cases of wage theft. I don't think you're doing everything you possibly could, because from the year 2021 to 2025, only 16 vendors were placed on the DOI monitoring agreements. Within this term alone, under the current sitting mayor, we had more corruption on contract cases than 16. So clearly, what we're doing is not working. How many contracts did the city award from 2021 to 2025? I would have to guess millions.
I don't have the, the dollar figure.
But the estimate is probably over millions of contracts, correct? From 2021 to 2025?
Chair, I wouldn't care to speculate on the, the dollar value, but I can certainly get back.
Not the dollar value, but the quantity of contracts.
Contracts? Again, that's something I'd have to get back to.
Okay, but the quantity of contracts released, because we know that it's about 20% of our city's budget every single year, for us to only have 16 vendors? That is shameful. I could probably pick out more New York Post stories about the corrupt contracts that we've given out to people who don't deserve it, that, that are more than 16. Something is not working in our vetting system.
I think what's missing, Chair One, from, from this discussion, is what our sister agency, Department of Investigation, does to, to, to stand up these monitoring agreements that gives us the assurance that what's been, the actions that have been taken are reasonable.
How many people in Mox are employed to work on the vendor integrity unit?
It's a small number of
What is that number?
Less than 10.
So, less than 10 people to oversee about 20% of $118 billion budget every single year for city contracts where we have year after year, month after month, fraudulent or corrupt contracts being doled out? Do you think that's enough people to be working on the vendor integrity unit?
Chair One, I, I think that, while you raise a good question, I think it's important to note that it's not done just by the vendor integrity unit alone. We do this in consultation with other agencies, other oversights. And so, happy to take this discussion and further depth at another time, if you'd like to.
I just want to, you know, follow up on a couple of points, because I can't understand what, how much do you tailor the analysis for each specific bidder? I mean, let me read to you here. According to the Procurement Policy Board rules, vendors for city agencies must be found to, quote, "have the business integrity to justify the award of public tax dollars." And the lack of, the offenses, offenses, including violations of state or local law, can indicate a lack of business integrity that seriously and directly affect responsibility as a city vendor, and that can be used as a reason to deny a contract or default on an existing contract. There's no doubt, no doubt, that when we look at these two contractors as examples, their conduct flies in the face of this basic fundamental test as to what is a responsible bidder and what constitutes business integrity in the city. And I'm just wondering, in the analysis that Mox, that the Parks Department does, do you look at the specifics of each situation, or is it a uniform test across the board? And if you look at the specifics across each situation, how do you arrive at the conclusion that Griffins Landscaping and Dragon Eddie conduct themselves with sufficient business integrity?
Speaking from Parks, I think you kind of nailed it here. It is a case-by-case determination that is made for, for, you know, for every, for every bid process, right? You know, and those, the collective totality of those circumstances, which can include a wide variety of circumstances, such as the vendor pool that's available broadly speaking, the importance and urgency of the work that's being discussed, you know, which can be in many times, time-sensitive and, and very important, those are among the considerations that need to be taken into account, in addition to the, you know, the details regarding to, you know, alleged wrongdoings or what have you. So, I think it's fair to say that we do approach each sort of contract process. I don't know, Chris, I don't know if, I'm sorry, our echo here. Chris, I don't know if you want to characterize maybe a specific example. Chair One mentioned earlier, you know, the reliance on, on self-reporting. I just want to be clear that there are, that that is far from the only consideration. There are databases that are referred to and information sources that are referred to well outside of self-reporting. So for the record, just want to clarify that.
Sure.
You know, that's far from the only reliance.
Let me just jump back to, to that point too, about the services they provide, because I just want to set the, the stage of what we have here, right? Do you have these definitions of what constitutes business integrity, responsible bidder? Now, let's take Dragon Eddie Brothers, for example. As a landscaping company, they were debarred by the Department of Design and Construction. So, besides the general definition, you have one agency de-barring a company that the Parks Department continues to use, two city agencies coming to entirely different conclusions about the fitness of a company to do business with the city. Can you explain to me how that's possible under these same rules?
Yeah, firstly, just not, not to split hairs, but I believe, from our perspective, debarment is a fairly technical term that is largely driven by violations of, of state law on, on the wage side, as I think has been referenced in other contexts. So, I, I think in this instance, it's more of an, it's more a case of DDC had a contract, decided not to pursue it further for other work. I believe it was, other, some other construction project. I'm not aware of the details. I'd have to refer to DDC there. In our case
Is it for wage theft? Is that what it was for?
I don't recall that. I don't, I'm not aware of the circumstances. But I do know it was subject to state law and therefore triggered sort of a different process that's not at issue with these other two cases. And then in our circumstance, a determination was made based on that tree-related work, as I understand it, circumstances were quite different than the decision that DDC made separately. So, yes, to, to, to the point you raised, it is made on a case, case-by-case basis, including the nature of the work and the timing of that work that is proposed.
And, you know, and I have a couple more questions I want to turn over to my co-chair and then to, to my colleagues. But it, I understand it's case-by-case, but it just flies in the face of logic that in a case-by-case analysis, one city agency finds a contractor unfit, but another agency finds them fit for the very same offenses, wage theft, fraud, these are things that are affecting all the provision of city services, whether it's DDC, whether it's the Parks Department. And I suspect part of what's happening too, and, and I should add, that even after the convictions, even if the owners have gone to jail and all those things, these companies are still getting extraordinary paydays from the Parks Department despite serious misconduct, criminal misconduct, that led to convictions and incarceration in the first place. And so, it just, it, there's, it doesn't make any sense to any of us here, given how serious the, the street tree needs are, why the Parks Department continues to use them. Now, what I've heard before too, is that companies like the Griffins Landscaping provides critical specialized services that justify continued use. I'd like to understand what critical specialized services means, and has, can you provide any specific evidence of unsuccessful attempts to find alternative vendors to provide these services?
Thanks for the question, council member. It is unique, very specialized, technical work, and the agency prides itself on its efforts it's made over the years to expand vendor pools writ large for all sorts of park-related work. If I can call upon Commissioner Greenfeld to characterize that, you know, especially in the world of tree-related work.
Sure.
I think she can characterize that, because I do think it's an important consideration. And it was certainly, it was certainly an important consideration that was taken into account.
Do you need me to be sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you, chairs. Please raise your right hand if you're able. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before these committees and respond honestly to council member questions? Thank, thank, oh, can you please respond?
Thank you very much for that question. I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. There are a host of things. First of all, it's a very difficult physical and regulatory environment to work in, in New York City. You know what it's like to work along the streets of New York City to maintain safety for both workers and people who are walking, and for the trees. So, it's a very difficult space to work in. It's this rare combination, tree planting, of hard construction work and soft landscaping construction work. In fact, on the year that we're talking about, we only had four unique vendors for 17 contracts when, when we were talking about these tree planting contracts. We've done a lot of work, and we saw that coming. We saw the dip in contractors, and it took us years to work up from that, where it was working with SBS. We had numerous pre-bid conferences, one-on-one vendor meetings, to talk to any vendors who expressed interest through different kinds of forums. We reviewed and adjusted contracting specs, so they would be, and also made contracts at different sizes and lengths to make them more attractive to both smaller contractors and larger contractors. They used to be just all the same, one to $3 million. Now, you know, we took advantage of certain contracting mechanisms lower than $1 million and up to $13 million. So we really widened the group of contractors who might be interested in it. We worked directly with SBS to recruit vendors. We provided dedicated staff to new vendors to ensure that they're successful, and in fact, we had vendors who sort of graduated from the smaller contracts to bid successfully on the larger contracts, and we continue to do outreach. So we, we really are making a concerted effort across the board to increase our vendors. It takes time, and each individual vendor is important to the process.
So Deputy Commissioner, if the current methods aren't working, and this is the result that they're producing, what thoughts and conversations has the Parks Department had to look at different ways to expand the pool? Because that's really what I think needs to happen here.
Thank you very much for that question, and we are always open to new ideas if, that if there's something we haven't thought of, we are happy to discuss it with you.
I would love to hear more about it too, and I'll just, you know, conclude here for now, but just to say, when we see these kinds of absurd, absurd results, it undermines public trust and confidence in government, in the services we provide, and it not only undercuts the serious efforts by the Parks Department to address these issues, but it, 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 you know, really raises serious questions too about how our public dollars, how taxpayer money is being spent, and it, it erodes confidence in the system. And, you know, we keep having this conversation, but we're not seeing the changes fast enough that we need to see to address it. I'll stop there for now, turn over to my colleague, Co-Chair One, to see if she has any questions.
Thank you, Chair Krishnan. If you could just take, come back and take a seat, because I did not hear a clear answer on how the Parks Department is defining critical specialized services?
Sure, thank you for that question. I'm, I'm, I'll just sort of summarize what I was saying before. Sorry, could you repeat that again, critical?
So, I'm trying to understand why Griffin Landscaping was deemed responsible enough to give critical specialized services. So what is criticalized, critical specialized services that no other landscaping company can provide for the Parks Department? That's what we want to understand.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure if there's anything different than the concept of being able to work under the speed and safety, and there are a host of contract specifications, I can't go into them, but there are hundreds of, of things that they have
Right.
To be able to follow. On the streets of New York City, it is very, very On the streets of New York City, it is very, very difficult. There's a lot of regulations they have to comply with, from sanitation, DEP, DOT, they have to get permits.
Yes, we understand the existing regulations. So how many vendors applied for that RFP response?
I don't really know how many applied for them. We have between two and 10 bidders on any, any specific contract across the board.
So out of two and 10 bidders, Griffin, the one that has, Griffin is the one that was awarded $25 million for landscaping while the owner serves federal prison time for bribery. So out of two to 10 bidders, they were the only ones that could serve these criticized, critical specialized services?
Thank you for that question. I don't know if, Chris, if you want to take that one? Yeah?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Just, if I may, want to clarify the process a little bit for, especially for tree-planting contracts. Most of our contracts, especially construction, have to be let by competitive sealed bid, not by RFP. So we can't evaluate all of the vendors and then pick the best one. That's not what we did here. We have to evaluate the low, apparent low bidder. And then, of course, because it's by competitive sealed bid, low bid, if we were to pass over a vendor, we would be going with a vendor with a higher bid. So some of that, that kind of factors into our analysis.
Thank you. So has Parks, Parks Department considered whether it's procure, whether the current sealed competitive bidding model for procurement discourages responsible contractors from competing when the same contractors, like Griffin or Dragon Eddie, are allowed to get special monitoring agreements to bid on the DPR tree work and are repeatedly awarded for these contracts?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. We consider that all the time. It is state law. That construction contract must be let by competitive sealed bid. Happy to have a conversation with your office about legislative forms.
Okay, and then, doesn't the state law, as well as city law, try to have some sort of integrity and ethics monitoring to make sure that the owner of the company didn't go to jail for bribery? How does that work?
Thanks for the question, Chair Wong. That's where we have the, the procedures that the city takes and the, the monitoring agreements that DOI, who is, I just want to note, is not with us today to, to answer that question, but if they were here, I would believe that they would answer to this and talk about the substantial effort that goes into standing up these monitoring agreements in order to mitigate the risks effectively to, before awarding a contract.
The 17 monitoring agreements that you have from the year 2021 all the way to 2025?
That's correct.
Only 17. It's hard for me to believe that there's only 17 that need this.
I, I just think that's a testament to the fact of how unusual and rare that these sort of circumstances are, right? These are, in the findings of extremely adverse.
Or a testament that our current process is not working adequately with the amount of corrupt contracts that have been doled out over this past tenure of the current sitting mayor. So can you help me understand, for Griffin and Dragon Eddie, how many, how many contracts were, have they been awarded now? Because we're hearing from advocates that it's been repeatedly awarded to these two contractors. How many contracts are you awarding to them?
I think that, I believe, they current, the two together collectively hold 11 out of 32 tree-related contracts, I believe.
That's a pretty large share of the 32 contracts for the city of New York.
Sorry, Chair, what's the total amount of those 11 contracts?
I think we'd have to double check. The dollar figure, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm afraid we'd have to double check that.
Well, according to our numbers that we have from the council side, it's 40 million plus 25 million, so 65 million.
Yeah, if that could, we can double-check that, that perhaps, yeah.
I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but on, I just want to go back to Mox's testimony, but we heard testified, "Certain questions in the questionnaire are designed to generate a flag based on the vendor's response," so self-reporting. "If the information provided by a vendor is in response to such a question generates a flag, those disclosures are not finalized until Mox reviews a disclosure for completeness. If the vendor's disclosure response does not generate a flag, then the disclosures are automatically underscore automatically filed." If I were a bad actor, wouldn't it be fair to assume that I would answer those vendor questionnaires in such a way that it would not generate a flag, so I would automatically bypass additional vending, vetting, especially Dragon Eddie and our friends at Griffin, who have been awarded multiple contracts? This seems to be a loophole.
Chair Wong, thank you for pointing that out. There's one thing that I think that it's important to note, that the vendor questionnaires is, is also, again, one part of the process. And so that's what the vendor is self-disclosing, but that is not the entirety, we don't take it on its face value. That's what individual agencies do. That is part of that responsibility determination, where individual agencies are now conducting their own line of vetting, and, and then extends beyond, that is just one piece of the puzzle that is being used here.
So let's go back to the automatic part, that if I were a vendor, like Griffin or Dragon Eddie, who has been working in the system for a long time, despite my corruptions and unethical behavior, that I'm going to automatically be able to bypass the Mox DOI review that you have. So for Parks Department, what are you doing in addition that you decided that these two vendors were very responsible, and you want to continue to do business with them, contract after contract after contract, that you're continuing to award them?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. I think our, Chris here can describe some of the many information sources that are referred to broadly speaking when reviewing for responsibility. I'll turn it to him.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Matt. I just want to hopefully help clarify that, again, as my colleague from Mox stated, there is, I, I think he was describing in somewhat detail the vendor questionnaire process. It's just one process, right? So we have a number of searches that we do sort of in Passport and outside of Passport, a number of databases, including searching press, legal databases like LexisNexis. So, you know, to, to, to point out, you know, to, to respond to your hypothetical, Councilmember One, if, if they were to disclose that they don't have any adverse findings, we're going to search and find out, and then they will have lied on their disclosure. And that's like a big, that's a big problem as well. So, you know, we check other city agencies' databases, state databases.
That's actually more concerning to me. So I'm still trying to wrap my head around the criteria that Parks Department and Mox uses on the city of New York to determine whether a contractor is quote-unquote "responsible" bidder or business integrity as defined under PBB rules, because for you to tell me that you are aware, so you were aware awarding these contractors of company insurance fraud convictions, you were aware of federal prison time for bribery, you were aware of debarment for documented wage theft as far back as 2016, so help me understand what criteria you're using that allows you to think that these people are, they should continue to be responsible vendors that we allow to do business with integrity with the city of New York for millions and millions of dollars? I still don't understand.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. We are aware, we became aware as soon as the indictments, you know, became public. And of course, we take, you know, any adverse information that we find on a vendor, whether it is prior to award or after award, very seriously. Our first step, in the interest of due process, is always going to be to reach out to the vendor, to ask whether and how they're going to address it, and we take that as a threshold issue before we determine whether we can continue doing business with them. My colleague Matt's testimony made an example about, you know, an environmental control board lien coming up, right? This is obviously a little bit different than that, but it is because the, because of the extraordinary steps that the, that the companies took to address the allegations, not just by entering into a monitorship agreement, but also by removing the indicted individual from the company, implementing a company code of, of ethics, retaining an internal integrity monitor at their cost, and of course, all of that is memorialized in the monitoring agreement. That was, you know, how we addressed, how the vendor was able to address these allegations, and we were continue, able to continue doing business after having put the contracts on hold.
I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Vernikov, but again, none of you have answered the question, what is the criteria used to determine that someone's responsible or that they have business integrity? What you guys are telling us, what you all are testifying, is in response to, after you find out that someone that you've awarded contracts to is not someone with business integrity who should not be responsible. So what benchmarks do you use to actually say that these people pass our threshold for responsible? That's what we're asking you, but we're not getting that answer from you. We're not hearing a response, what, we don't, we don't even know what the definition is for responsible. We don't understand what thresholds or criteria you're using to say that these people meet our benchmarks, or that they actually are someone we want to do business with. That's what we keep on asking, and we're not getting an answer for. I'm going to turn it back to the chair for more questions.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to turn it over to our, some of our colleagues now who had questions. Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you, chairs. Thank you for being here and being present to ask the question. For me, as a former contractor for New York City, we have issues. And I'm in agreement with my colleagues here for saying, how could we let folks coming that have issues? But there's other issues that we have to deal with. It's management, money, and money never come on time, and then you're not having staff to deal with the problems, with making sure that they're on top of what's going on. And for me, that giving room for folks to get contracted should not, they should, that should not be getting contracts, that, let's be honest with things. Describe the invoices process, right? We come contractor has completed requirement work on a capital budget. How often are payment to contractors delayed?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. I can certainly confirm that, you know, paying our vendors is extremely important. You know, the city's process is, you know, can be complicated to navigate, but I'll, I'll turn to our echo here, Chris, to, to talk a little bit more about broader, broadly speaking, vendor payments on, on that front.
And by the way, I, I have to be specific. I'm not talking about the management just for presently. I'm talking about management on top of management, because getting delayed the money process is a big problem on the part of getting great vendors as well. So we need to correct that. Yeah, you can answer your question.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Thank you, Matt. The, yeah, as Matt said, we pride ourselves on not only making sure that payments are made on time as much as possible, but also making sure that our payment review and authorization process is compliant with a number of city laws and governing laws and, and requirements. The general process for payment requisitions in a capital context is, the vendor will provide what we call a pencil copy or a draft, payment requisition or invoice. Field staff will review the draft and provide any corrections. Contractor then submits their final payment requisition. There are two levels of approval at the agency level and the program level. The payment goes to our accounting team. It is audited by the engineering audit officer and, you know, what, who can perform a desk audit or even field audits. And then payment information is provided to the Financial Information Services Agency and then released by electronic funds transfer. With funding in place and, you know, with, in the absence of any holds on payments, such as, you know, deductions for non-compliance or investigation, liens, and so on, payments are typically released within 30 days of a final payment being submitted.
I don't think your payment really being 30 days for a lot, but that's another story to itself. What process, because I know payment from the city has not been easy. What process is used to ensure the contractor gets paid and the work is completed acceptably?
Again, with the funding in place and an absence of holds or deductions on the payment, payments are nearly always released within 30 days of a final approved requisition. There are prompt payment provisions in the contract to help ensure subcontractors get paid for their work when the prime contractor is paid for that work. And performance on contract work is evaluated according to the Procurement Policy Board, the PBB rules, and other governing laws, and then recorded in the Passport system. We also have contractual mechanisms like retainage, guarantee, bonds, default mechanisms, deductions, and liquidated damages in applicable contracts to help ensure performance of contract obligations.
And the interests are ridiculous. What criteria, you know, I've been there, done it, so that's why I can tell you. What criteria are agencies required to use to determine whether to competitively rebid versus renew?
You're referring to, so, so during the procurement process, there's, you know, during the competitive sealed bid, there is, there can be a circumstance in which a bid comes in higher than, bids come in higher than expected? Is that what you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to?
What criteria are you, you use to determine?
Sorry.
So are you going to renew, or are you going to give the rebid to the, to the contract?
We understood, I think. Thank you, Councilmember. We, we do have renewal provisions in some of our contracts, and the determination that we make whether to exercise that renewal option, which exists at the agency or the city's option, at the city's discretion, versus competitively bid or, you know, issue a new RFP is, you know, dependent on a number of factors, most notably whether we are going to continue to get good pricing and good performance from that vendor. If the work is going well, then chances are that we would, we would decide to renew rather than re-procur. Typically, re-procuring has a higher cost and it can be a time delay.
Does Mox track whether renewed contracts have higher rates of performance problems? You want me to repeat it? Does Mox track whether renewed contracts have higher rates of performance problems?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. I'm sure that Passport does contain that information and that a report can be done to do that, but I don't have that information handy, and we can certainly follow up to answer your question at another time.
All right, I'm, I'm going to stop right here, but I'm, one of the recommendations I'm going to give is to make sure that vendors are getting their pay, and you can have more competitive, and we cannot forget minority business on, and to be integrated in the process if we want to address the inequities in our city. And when you do have smaller contractors, I will say to take a little close eye on that and try to support, and that's what now you have bidders that can have issues and you, you continue dealing business with. We're not opening the process and then actually be transparent with the process and help those that are coming to the field trying to do business with the city of New York. So I thank you, but let's do better, because when you have corrupt, corruption around all over, it's just not looking good for us as a city, and we need to do better. That's all I can say. Thank you, chairs.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. I also want to mention, we've been joined by Councilmember Bachar, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Vernikov.
Thank you, chairs. Good afternoon. My questions are for Mox. My first question is, what consequences do agencies face when they award contracts to vendors that later prove non-responsible? Are there any penalties for agencies that repeatedly fail to appropriate, appropriately investigate their vendors?
I'm sorry, Councilmember. Can you repeat the question one more time? Because I, I.
Oh, sure. What consequences do agencies face when they award contracts to vendors that later prove non-responsible? Are there any penalties for agencies that repeatedly fail to appropriately investigate their vendors?
Thank you for the question. As soon as adverse information comes up that causes concern on an existing contract, that's a, that's a different type of discussion than a, a consideration prior to awarding a new contract. Either way, the oversights are, are informed, both internally within the individual agencies, as well as the New York City Law Department, Department of Investigation, Mox, as needed, depending on the issue. So if there is a case where agencies may be making questionable determinations on things or actions, then Mox would review its, its ability to conduct the procurement process, and we may consider limiting their, their delegated abilities to operate within Passport, which would be a recommendation for award, for example. We would have that delegation removed from that agency to make sure that the oversights such as Mox would review each thing, each award as it comes forward, so that it can have a, a review before anything is let.
But in regards to penalties, are there penalties?
I'm, I'm not quite sure I understand what, what you mean by penalties.
Are there penalties for any? Are there penalties for any agencies that repeatedly fail to appropriately investigate their vendors?
So Chair, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember, there is no penalty that I could think of because the process that exists will bring the issue to light. And so I sincerely would question whether or not an agency would be making actions without any oversight involved.
I'm sorry, you have a question?
Where I sincerely doubt that agencies would be operating without its oversight involved and any kind of adverse information or issue that may arise in the course of their contracts.
The Comptroller has also recommended prohibiting noncompetitive procurement for entities under federal investigation. Why hasn't MoX implemented this recommendation?
Thank you for the question. As I mentioned in my testimony earlier, it's the city's policy not to debar. And so that would be that the city just doesn't do that unless there's some extreme circumstances. And so we do have a process in place where we do check the vendor's responsibility, we do have our oversight, and to take mitigating steps to reduce the risk to the city.
Okay. How many contracts citywide are renewed without competition on average each year?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, let me make sure I understand your question. When renewing a contract, we're exercising the option that we have in the existing contract to renew. So can you help me understand?
Yeah, the question is, how many contracts citywide are renewed without competition on average each year? If you know.
I can get back to you on that.
Okay. What criteria are agencies required to use to determine whether to competitively rebid versus renew?
I'll have to follow up with you, Councilmember.
Okay. Does MoX track whether renewed contracts have higher rates of performance problems? I think that was asked.
Yes, Councilmember. Again, equally good question, but that's something I'll have to be able to get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Have you ever considered just straight up replacing the agency chief procurement officer at Parks Department, since there seems to be a lot of contracts that should not be in place being awarded?
Our agency staff hires are made at the Commissioner level. Those decisions are made by the Commissioner. We're very proud of our contracting staff. But to answer your question, I'm not aware that there's been any consideration in making those changes. As discussed today, the arrangements that have been made were in highly exceptional circumstances, and were done pursuant to policies that exist, that have existed since the '90s in coordination with DOI and others. So I think we don't really, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Right. I'm going to turn it over to Vicky Palladino.
Councilmember Narcisse has a quick follow-up, and we're going to turn it over to Councilwoman Palladino.
I want to find out, do you have contracts for the trees when it comes to lanternflies, when it comes to bees? Because facing the community is outraged for those things. They cannot touch the trees. That's the city trees, but yet those flies are flying over their houses. I have some terrible pictures. I know for lanternflies, we are about to get rid of them very soon with the weather, but how about bees, different things are going on? Do we have contract in the city for that?
Meaning like a bee hive that is in a tree?
To manage the bees, yes. And the lanternflies. Like this summer now, I have some picture that they had sent in their office, horrible. And then they cannot touch the trees.
I wouldn't say there's a standing contract for bee hive removal.
Do you have people to manage those?
But if there is a severe concern about a bee hive located in a tree, if you could bring that to our attention, and I think we'd approach, to use a slightly different example, we certainly run into wasp nests, hornet's nests, beehives that are in the eve of a Parks restroom building, or another sort of facility. And we certainly, our maintenance and operations staff certainly work with all due protection and to remove said, anything that's dangerous, that's something we can address. Specific to hives and trees, I'm not as familiar with the details, but I think if there's a specific safety concern, please bring that to our attention. We'd take a closer look, for sure.
But they call parks, but nobody's kind of like, is passing the buck like. Nobody's kind of have a plan to come and themselves, they cannot touch the city trees. But what do they do in that? Do you have contractors?
There's not an existing--
Do you have contractors to take care of those?
I suspect that's the kind of work that would probably be done in-house with Parks employees, I suspect, but I could be wrong, sorry.
I will also say that we give free tree work permits to anybody who does want to go up in a tree and take care of a bee's or a wasp nest if it's a concern to a homeowner. We can work with you to offer that permit. It's free.
So it's not that they're forbidden from doing it, they're forbidden from doing it without consultation and approval?
Uh-huh. All right. So good to know. We'll follow up again. Thank you. I'll wait.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. Thank you for waiting too, so that we have quorum. And Councilwoman Palladino, you're up.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Ah, good. Thank you both Chairs for hosting this meeting. This is extremely, extremely important. You know, with everything that we have going on, I'm breaking down numbers here. I guess I'm going to throw it out there, and you tell me who's going to be able to answer first. We've already come to the conclusion that this has been an absolute joke as far as the amount of millions and millions of dollars that are being given out to corrupt companies. Anybody who runs a council office, like all of us here do, we know that I'd go 75% to 80% of our complaints, especially in a very residential area such as mine, deals with trees and deals with anything that has to do with forestry, as well as our parks. Now, let me understand this. Is it true, did I hear correctly, that there are only two tree contractors for seven million trees in the city of New York?
Hey, Councilmember, no, I don't believe that's correct. I believe we have, how many different? It is a finite universe of contractors that are qualified for this really kind of unique and technical work. And I'll hand it over to Commissioner Greenfeld to provide more context.
Sorry, thank you for that question. I think what you recall is that I had said there are between two and eight, or something like that, bidders per contract. I think that may have been the number, but perhaps our echo can, I don't know if we have the other number.
Okay, so let's break it down then. Not to interrupt you, let's get to the quick. So how many actual tree contractors do we have here in the city of New York? Give me the borough of Queens. I'm from Queens. How many tree contractors do we have?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. We have, we counted 12 viable tree planting vendors.
Well, that's what I thought I heard ways ago. Okay. Now, also, I want to dissect the number. 325 contractors? Am I reading that right? At a price of $700 million? What are we getting for $700 million?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. I think you're reading from testimony that we awarded 355 capital contracts for just over $700 million. Is that correct? And I'm sorry, do you mind repeating your question, please?
Yeah. 325 hundred contractors? And they are getting $700 million?
Yes. We have 355, the Parks Capital Division awarded 355 prime contracts totaling over $700 million to approximately 100 distinct prime vendors. Again, that's the capital projects universe. And then, not counting the contractors individually, the awards were to 165 prime contract awards and 929 subcontract awards. Again, all determined each on their own on a case-by-case basis to be responsible vendors under the PBB rules.
Okay. So what I'm trying to figure out here is the actual cost. We're making people very, very wealthy here, aren't we? I have some really simple solutions to this. Since there's so much corruption, and absolute corruption breeds corruption, absolutely. That's the problem we have. And right now, what I'd like to see happen, and I'm seriously considering this for my district, I want to see my local small business landscapers, tree contractors, of which we have many. You tell me how we can localize this and make this, localize this to 51 different council districts. Rather than give contracts out that are obviously to this guy Champion, Griffins, Dragonetti, three contractors, okay, that we cannot seem to shake as far as we're rehiring them and we are giving them more and more and more. I want my guys here in my district, the small guys who have been operating businesses for 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, respectively so. And I am a contractor myself, former contractor, and a landscaping contractor. My medians look like hell. The sides of my roads look like hell. My trees look like hell. My sidewalks are being picked up. Take seven to 10 years, try to tell, try to tell a constituent, gee, I'm sorry, but you know what, you need to wait another seven years. I know you applied three years ago. So I think if we bring this down to a local level, you tell me what a local contractor that lives in my neighborhood, or is from in and around my district or surrounding districts could start to bid properly and qualify so they can come into their districts, know their districts as they do, and get the work done for probably, to say, less than half of what you're doing right now is an understatement. Tell me. Let's fix this problem. This problem has a solution. Let's work on that. Tell me, give me some of your ideas.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that, Councilmember. And I think as some of my colleagues have noted, Parks has worked aggressively to try to encourage more smaller businesses to consider doing business with the city and to get involved. I think some businesses find it a little daunting, maybe a little intimidating, and we really want to work as closely as possible. And those efforts can take a wide variety. That can be outreach events and fairs, things of that nature. It can be sort of more closely one-on-one for new applicants.
I could pick up the phone and call them tomorrow and say, I'd like you to get a contract with the city. Are you interested in doing that? You want to know what one of the biggest problems were when we took contracts with the city? My husband and myself with our business was getting paid. We were waiting 60 to 90 days, if not more. 60 days was a dream. Sometimes we were waiting six months, eight months. Can't run a business like that. So that's the deterrent that a lot of the smaller, more local, honest guys are going to get. I want to figure out a way that we could work this out on a timely basis. You know, when we talk Parks and we talk MoX, we're talking in a very grand scheme of things. We're the city of New York, it's huge. I say we take that pie, we break it down, and we figure it out. And we could do this. So I know they have to go through Passport, and I know all of that. Give me something that I could say to my local contractors that would make it appealing to them to go through Passport, to try to get what they need to get. And the big thing would be money. So tell me how we could figure that out.
We appreciate that, Councilmember. And I think we'd like to take that back and put a little thought into the best way to sort of frame and package this sort of messaging that could go out. We work really closely with Small Business Services, our other agencies, in terms of the city wants to do business with New York companies that are out there. Local services are the best services, right? We know that. So I think there's a lot of work to do on that front, and happy to work with you on that further.
You just broke up. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you, Councilmember. I'll restate, we'd like to actually take this back and give it some more thought. And in terms of the best way to frame that information for small businesses out there that you can help connect with, and we'd encourage, we'd love to partner with all Councilmembers and all elected officials all over the city to encourage those conversations all across the city. So we'd like to explore new and creative ways to do that anytime, for sure.
Because, I mean, Griffin came from Westchester. We're paying people who don't even live in the city of New York to come down into the Bronx. Westchester isn't far, I realize that. But there's got to be a better way to be able to do what we're doing. And if you can figure out a package, I think my council members would be thrilled to death to know that their districts would be handled by their own contractors who live not far and be able, and these guys are hungry for money. They need the work. And I think if we could feed our own first, and these are honest, small business people who want to make a living, I think we should try to figure that out. And since I am on the Parks Committee, I think between Julie with contracts and Sheikar as Chair, I think we could really put our heads together. Like I said, I did this for a living for over 35 years. I know from which I speak, and I know what goes into these things. I want to help, I want to work, I want to get my guys, I want my district to look as it should. Not a single homeowner should have to wait seven to 10 years to get a tree trimmed. And sidewalks should not have to take seven to 10 years to get repaired. Meanwhile, the homeowner gets sued when the sidewalk is lifted. Then we have a stump problem. That comes with trees. You take the tree down, and then you get the stump grinded down. The stumps is what's causing the sidewalks to rise. People are getting sued. This is a problem. And it cannot, it can't wait any longer. And the idea that these guys were making this kind of money and being convicted of felonies, and yet still being able to, this is ridiculous. But thank you, Sheikar, thank you, Julie, thank you, everybody, for having this meeting. I think we really are going to cut some ground now, and we're going to figure this out. We could get this fixed. I know we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Palladino. I couldn't agree more that it's such a glaring problem, and there's already, it takes so long to get trees, the service they need to, that it's, there's clearly a need on multiple levels to expand the pool of contractors. And I think what we are urging is Parks and MoX all to come together to really figure this out. Because we keep going back to the same well, and it's a very corrupt well, and it shouldn't be one that we should keep going back to to get services. While at the same time, there's, separate and apart from that, a great need for more contractors to reduce the delays in tree maintenance. Next up, we have the questions. Councilwoman Bacher.
Good afternoon. Thank you to Chairs Wong, and thank you, Councilmember Krishnan, for chairing this committee. The Mayor's Office of Contract Services, you oversee the procurement processes for the city. And in many ways, I feel for you for what you've had to inherit and the hard work you're doing to reform this system. But I want to share with you just one example of what we are seeing on the capital side in our district with respect to the cost of capital projects. And just one example is a bathroom in DeWitt Clinton Park. How much would you guess a restroom in DeWitt Clinton Park is going to cost to renovate?
To clarify, that question is directed at our MoX colleague, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm afraid I couldn't even begin.
I know, I know. $6 million. There have been efforts to address the ballooning costs. And I know that those efforts are evidently still underway. But could you just briefly, just give us some hope? Give my constituents some hope that there's going to be some sanity brought to these price tags? Because I, as part of, with my council discretionary funding, I've been able to fund these projects, and I struggle with funding them because it doesn't, in my view, it borders on being an abuse of the public's money when we're-- an abuse of the public's money when we're spending this much. You could rebuild my whole hometown for $6 million. And this is a bathroom in a public park. So give us some hope that things are going to change.
I'm happy to interject here and maybe provide a little bit of hope. There's no denying that construction costs are remarkably high in New York City. I don't think that's unique to park projects. A recent study, I recall, I think New York City displaced, I think it was Zurich, as the most expensive city in the world to construct things. So I think that's, and secondly, I just need to, just to clarify for everyone's benefit, the agency doesn't set prices, right? With like a price gun or something like that, right? Like this all goes through a competitive sealed bid process, just to be clear. And we share the frustration that these costs have risen over the years, for sure. And the agency has taken really strong steps. That's been streamlining designs. We've actually had a really exciting, we're in the midst of a really exciting effort. We've installed one, what's referred to as the Portland Lou, which is sort of a standalone, a six, is it? Sorry, maybe six. But at a considerably lower cost, it is five, one per borough, and at a considerably lower cost. I think that came in around a million per site. There's a lot of complex work that comes with building restroom facilities, right? Sewer connections, other utility connections. You know, it is not as simple as a small project in someone's home or what have you. But we fully acknowledge that those cost pressures can be frustrating. We share that, and it is not uncommon for the agency to have to reject a bid. Bids that are, you know, that come in, that come in high over budget, right? That is, and that's a difficult choice to make, you know, as opposed, you know, as opposed to going, and then we, sometimes let's go back to said council member who generously provided funding, you know. And so I think that is a frustration that's shared across the board, not just for council-funded projects, but for those that are moving forward with mayoral agency funding as well.
The Trust for Public Land renovates playgrounds in schoolyards. They have done projects in our council district in a fraction of the time for a fraction of the cost, yet they are not permitted to do capital projects in city parks. Are you familiar with this dynamic?
I am. I understand they've been involved in sort of what we call the broader, broadly, the School Yards to Playgrounds program, working closely with NYC schools, and I understand they've been a great and excellent partner. Private entities that perform, you know, work do have the advantages structurally sometimes in terms of timeline and occasionally cost. We have seen that where, you know, privately funded entities can advance work at a given. And that's for a very complex set of reasons largely relating, you know, to the city's procurement system and the rules that are in place for city agencies to follow. Some of these entities do have some structural advantages in that regard. I am less familiar with proposals for them to do work elsewhere. I'd be curious to hear more, and that's something, you know, we could always look at.
Yeah, I've spoken to the commissioner, the last couple commissioners about this, because we fund the Trust for Public Land to renovate schoolyards. We fund them. We allocate money to them as a nonprofit. They do the work in a fraction of the time for a fraction of the cost, yet we can't fund them to do work in our parks.
I, yeah, I'd have to look into the funding piece there. I'm a little less familiar with as to how and where TPL, that work was funded. I guess that, it wasn't my impression that it was city-funded or city/council-funded.
Yeah, it's a mix of funding, but we allocate funding to them. I just want to give them, I want to give them money.
Sure.
So that they can do our playgrounds in our parks for a fraction of the price, for a fraction, at a fraction of the time. And I understand that there's, you know, hurdles to overcome, but I think we should all try to figure that out. Because to the extent that there's a public-private model here that could save a lot of money and get projects done a lot quicker, I really want to work on this with you.
Yeah, that's a, thank you so much, council member. And I think that's something we're very interested in doing. We've worked with some close partners, Central Park Conservancy and others, to advance projects with a public-private model. We've seen some considerable success. You know, will it be replicable at every, you know, corner neighborhood park? That I'm not sure. I think that's a nuanced and complicated discussion, but one we're very eager to work with you on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Botcher. Just want to second his strong support for Trust for Public Land. They do excellent work. They've done work in my district too, and, you know, really provides a model of ways that this can be done quickly and efficiently. Going back to the other questions that we had, I know Councilmember Narcisse touched on this a bit too, but just to look at it from a different standpoint, these contractors also have a very, very low to nonexistent MWBE participation rate. And my question is, if you look at it from that standpoint too, what is the Parks Department doing, even moving away from these very problematic contractors, to expand the pool of MWBE bidders, which provides yet another avenue to move away from problematic contractors and towards the ones that align more with the values of the city?
Broadly speaking, I'll just start by saying that the agency is actually very proud of its record, broadly speaking, with engaging MWBE vendors, especially in the sort of capital world. But I'll turn to Chris to provide a little more context on that front.
Yeah, could we ask some details of how many MWBE contractors you have?
Yes, yes, thank you, council members. Parks is perennially among the top three mayoral agencies in contract dollars awarded to MWBEs. In Fiscal 25, Parks awarded $285 million to MWBEs across prime and subcontracts, which is 41, 46.1% of our spending, which exceeds the city's overall MWB utilization and targets, specifically with regard to tree plant, capital tree planting work. Since 2023, 63% of our tree planting projects and 50% of our capital tree and sidewalk contracts were awarded to MWBEs. And of the 12 vendors that we mentioned that are viable for tree planting work, six of them are MWBEs. Very proud of the outreach and engagement efforts that our forestry team has, you know, engaged in over the last several years, from cold calling vendors to holding informational sessions, working with the Department of Small Business Services to maximize outreach and engagement. And that's why we've been able to see more participation from small businesses and MWBEs, and we've also been able to lower our tree prices as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. Our council analysis has shown that when it comes to street tree work, that entities under a monitorship have an incredible low or no MWBE subcontracting. Is that correct? And if so, why is that the case?
Thank you for the question, council member. MWB participation goals are for specific tree planting, planting projects are usually low, given the very specialized, specific nature of the work. There's limited subcontracting opportunities because the sites are very small. They're the size of a tree pit. They're spread across the city. They must be completed according to very aggressive productivity standards with steep liquidated damages provisions for not meeting them. In addition, there's technical requirements to, that make subbing, subcontracting the work impracticable for many reasons: cost, time, supervision, permits, tracking, administration. So when we do a goal-setting analysis, you know, we typically determine that for, again, not just for these particular vendors, but for any street tree planting contract, that largely the contract has to be self-performed. The subcontracting opportunities for which there are MWBEs available is typically limited to a little bit of tree guard work. Again, that drive, that does drive down the MWBE goals for those particular contracts. But again, I want to point out that what we've been able to do with small businesses and MWBEs, small purchases and outreach, we've been able to get our utilization, you know, overall for that program really, really high.
Yeah, my, thank you for the information. My concern is really this street tree program. And I think, you know, it's, we keep hearing about specialized services and reasons, and, you know, that just becomes a catch-all to keep justifying working with the problematic contractors. And I think we've got to find another way to figure this out, because by a lot of measures, by performance standards, by business integrity standards, by MWBE standards, there's so many different reasons for Parks to take a different approach to this. Councilmember Wong, I think you had some questions too?
Thank you so much, Chair Krishnan. Yeah, it seems like we continue to ask the same questions. So if the Parks Department's hands are tied by the general municipal law, competitive sealed bidding rules, and Parks must always take the lowest bid, then I believe bad actors are always going to put forth the lowest bid because they're doing wage theft, they have insurance fraud, some of them are in jail. So it seems like a perverse incentive. Do you not agree with that? And what are we doing to make sure that we aren't continuing in this cycle of corruption?
As I think testimony from both MOCs and Parks has shown today, I think there are a variety of mechanisms in place to carefully review bids that are submitted for projects and those opportunities. I don't know that the city's approach to competitive sealing, sealed bids necessarily invites anyone to do anything other than submit the bid that they think is best. I'm not aware of any external, but you know, perhaps contractors would have a different perspective. I can't speak to that.
So you don't believe there's anything wrong with our current process and continuing to work contracts?
I think our agency works really hard to advance contracts appropriately, as quickly as possible, so that the valuable work that's included and reflected by these contracts is delivered to New Yorkers. That's what I believe.
Right, that's why you're the echo officer. Could you also answer from MOCs?
Thank you, Chair Wong. Be happy to have the conversation with you on any legislative change that you may want to suggest at the state level, and perhaps any changes to the New York City Procurement Policy Board rules regarding competitive sealed bidding.
Okay, we'll definitely follow up. I'm sorry, you're not the echo officer, the one next to you is the echo officer. So we have other follow-up questions. During the year-long delay in tree pruning caused by Dragon Eddie Brothers arrests, how many trees became hazardous or died due to lack of maintenance, which we all get complaints about in the city of New York?
I think we'd have to check on the exact impact of any delays in processing those contracts. Commissioner Greenfield, I don't know if you have, know off the top of your head?
I wouldn't know off the top of my head. We can tell you how many trees we pruned each year compared to our goal, and that's in the MMR. I don't have that at my fingertips, but we report that every year. I would say that any delay, there would have been further delay had we gone through the termination process and rebidding. It would have taken as long, if not longer, as what we, what we chose to do in consultation with all the other agencies who help us in our procurement decisions.
Do you know how many emergency tree removals you had to do as a result of a year-long delay in tree pruning caused by Dragon Eddie Brothers arrests?
I don't have that information, but I can give you, we can find out how many removals we did. I, we didn't see any increase in emergency tree removals or high-risk situations over the last whatever years. The only reason there would have been is if they had large storms, and that's when you'll see spikes in the work that we do.
Can you also tell us the additional cost that it took that we had to recoup from city taxpayer dollars to do that for emergency tree removals due to the year-long delay?
I don't anticipate that there were any increased costs to the city due to the delay. I don't have that data in front of me, so I don't know for certain.
So you believe that even though there was a year-long delay in tree pruning caused by the Dragon Eddie Brothers arrests with insurance fraud, that there was no emergency removals or any other needs from the city of New York with a year-long delay?
I don't believe so. We can look at the numbers, at what tree removals we had and what our risk numbers were, but we monitor those sorts of trends very closely, and I'm not aware of any trend that would have been related to that delay.
So do you have any remorse as the Parks Department for the year-long delay on tree pruning caused by the Dragon Eddie Brothers?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Do you, does the Park Department, the Parks Department have any sort of remorse or regret for having hired the Dragon Eddie Brothers?
I think we, as a city, are, take each of our decisions very carefully. Parks Department doesn't do anything on its own. We follow all procurement rules. We work with the MOCs and with DOI and the law, the city law department, and we made the best decision, and we stand by that decision.
So you believe then hiring the brothers who caused the year-long delay in tree pruning was the best decision the city could have made?
I think we made the best decision.
Okay, that's quite a bold statement. What percentage of Parks total contracts are renewals?
Thank you for the question, council member. I'd like to get back to you on that if we could. I don't have that handy.
Okay, because we want to know exactly how many contracts awarded to Griffins Landscaping, Dragon Eddie Brothers, and Champion Electrical were renewals versus new bids. And we also have a lot of nonprofit partners, like Big Reuse, that help with street tree cleaning, pruning, and of the sort. We want to understand how many nonprofit organizations currently hold contracts with Parks and have nonprofit organizations express interest in taking over work from these problematic contractors?
Specific to tree-related work, I'm not aware that nonprofits constitute a significant proportion of folks submitting bids. Anyone is welcome to, right? Like they, nothing precludes a nonprofit organization from, from building capacity and submitting a bid. It would be considered. I'm not aware that that's been a significant factor in recent years. We'd encourage anyone interested in doing tree work and doing business with the city of New York, regardless of how they're constituted as a nonprofit or for-profit. We'd be open to that. The city, Parks specifically, certainly has nonprofit vendors that are paid through the agency. A big part of that, you might be familiar with, are council discretionary awards, for example. These nonprofits that are providing programming or what have you are sort of funded by the council, but it's routed through the Parks Department. So that's probably the most significant category in which a nonprofit entity is doing business with the city in that regard. But that's considerably different than sort of the large-scale construction work that's involved in tree work.
And thank you for that question. I would also say that we facilitate, seek out, and work with nonprofit partners for grant proposals. We do a lot to support other nonprofit partners to get grant proposals. We streamline permitting. We help them find locations, and we try to make that as easy as possible. And they have been very successful in acquiring grants over the last several years.
Okay. Over 30 elected officials demanded termination of Griffin's contracts. Department of, DPR didn't respond to any media inquiries. What are the department's protocols to responding to council and other elected officials' concerns about contractor integrity?
The agency, I believe, to my knowledge, responds to, you know, each and every inquiry with a piece of correspondence. The agency has a correspondence system, as do all city agencies, and we take inquiries and expressions from elected officials very seriously. So I, you know, I think you said something about press inquiries. I wouldn't be able to give you a number on the number of times we do or don't respond to an inquiry from the press. But specific to concerns that are expressed from elected officials, I think everyone on the dais today has sent us formal letters and have received formal responses. So I think that's generally the agency's approach to the feedback from elected officials.
Got it. So what I'm still trying to understand, it sounds like from the testimony and what we're hearing on the dais is that the word responsible for responsible vendors is based on the discretion of the echo officer or MOCs or everyone in between who are making these decisions, and more towards can this contractor do the work? So if bad actors continue to get the, continue to provide the lowest bid, we believe that other contractors who may not have issues with the government, with fraud, wage theft, or bribery, would be deterred from applying because they can't compete with the lowest bid. But for the standardized criteria in determining who, determining when integrity monitoring is appropriate versus outright debarment, can you help me understand how you make those decisions in the city of New York? So when do you debar people? Like what is the threshold versus when you say we need to have integrity monitoring instead? And how does it work if the state debars? Because we know for, as legislators, we are under the jurisdiction of state law. So how come that agencies, we know, have been barred, city can continue to do contracting work with them or continue to contract with them? That's what we're trying to understand. So specifically as an example, how is it that a contractor convicted of defrauding several municipalities such as Griffin can continue to receive city contracts under monitoring?
So Chair Wong, thank you for the question. Just because I feel it necessary here, I'm just going to repeat parts of my testimony that I think addresses in part your question. So with regard to the city contracting practices, the PPB rules guide and govern the actions of the city contracting agencies and vendors seeking to do business with the city. As a foundational principle of city contracting, the rules mandate agencies make purchases from and award to contracts to responsible vendors. A responsible vendor is one that affirmatively demonstrates having the capability in all respects to perform fully the contract required. respects to perform fully the contract requirements and the business integrity to justify the award of public tax dollars. I've also went on to say that it's noted and emphasized that it is the policy of the city that vendors are not subject to debarment, except in very limited circumstances prescribed by state law. Now, a violation of, of, I'm sorry, I'm driving a blank, labor law, thank you, is one of those circumstances. Right, explicitly stated in the PBB rules following revisions that were recently made to the New York City Charter, which I also think answers in part your question again. Any discussion utilizing debarment would need serious consideration of constitutional and due process rights, among other significant concerns regarding equity and ensuring continuation of critical operations and services. So stepping back for a moment, this is a, this is a very holistic approach to making this determination. It is not just one simple thing that is being used to apply broadly. It is a case-by-case that has to be taken very seriously. The city does take it very seriously. MOCs takes it very seriously, the contracting agencies, and our other oversights, such as the Law Department and the Department of Investigation. And so when we stand up in those cases where there is something questionable that may present a risk to the city, that the Department of Investigation come in and if it sees as appropriate, will stand up, a monitoring agreement that will satisfy the concerns that we have of the risk inherent in that situation. And so that enables the city then to make a determination. Keeping these circumstances in mind, specific to this circumstance, to this issue, we find that the vendor is capable of performing the way I had just described a responsible vendor is.
I had always thought that the city of New York was risk averse, but I'm seeing that we are very risk tolerant because a contractor like Griffin was convicted of defrauding several municipalities, but we just continue to do business with them. Interesting. My next question is, Dragon Eddie Brothers were debarred by DDC, but they continue to receive park contracts from the city, which we talked about already. So I'm trying to understand, one, the Parks Department was aware of the debarment by DDC, and does Passport from MOCs have a unified debarment list that applies across all agencies so that the agencies can see when another agency has debarred a contractor?
I believe the information that you're speaking to is caution information that may be the result of a debarment specific to a city agency, it wasn't to the city in general. That was a very, very extreme circumstance in which we've already mentioned that any of this adverse information would be recorded in Passport for other agencies to see, and it doesn't necessarily mean that the presence of that information would cause an agency to automatically overlook them or otherwise reject their proposal or bid.
So does Passport have a unified system that has a debarment list for other agencies to see when a city agency has debarred a contractor?
No, the city does not have a debarment list.
So was Parks Department aware of DDC's department when you accepted the renewal?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. I don't believe, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're aware of a debarment from DDC per se. They may not have continued doing business with Dragon Eddie. Again, a different case-by-case situation. Parks decided to, again, after the steps that were taken under this monitorship agreement, Parks determined to continue to do business with them. John?
Chair Wong, I just want to also mention, just because I received a copy of DOI's testimony this morning just before walking in, and I do believe that they go into detail about Dragon Eddie and the three-year debarment from contracts with the Department of Design and Construction and the three-year condition of discharge, that this was, this was a condition of those particular circumstances, of which I don't have any more information other than what I have in front of me, and I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention as well, to see what information that DOI has presented, but I would defer to DOI to give us any more details on the matter.
Okay. I would really request that Passport have a new added feature that allows us to see debarment across the agencies so that agencies can be fully aware before they decide to do contracting with such vendors. And I would also like to hear about what consequences agencies face when they award contracts to vendors that later prove non-responsible. Are there any? Are there any penalties for agencies that repeatedly fail to appropriately investigate their vendors?
Thank you for the question, Chair Wong. I'm not quite sure I understand the question. If I, if I may try to rephrase the question back to you. If an, if an agency awards a contract to a vendor that it's found responsible prior to award, and then after the award of that contract, there are circumstances that may consider them to be, by whatever definition, not responsible. Am I understanding your question correctly? I believe I had mentioned this earlier, I believe the question had been asked. It's, as circumstances may arise in the course of a contract, agencies take whatever action to respond to that circumstance, whether that's bringing up, bringing the issue to MOCs, the Law Department, Department of Investigation, or all three. But those circumstances are raised in every case.
Okay, so there's no penalty to the agency, but the agency just has to take action when it's notified?
For?
Contracting with a vendor that is found to be corrupt or unethical, et cetera?
There are no penalties that I would consider worthy of an agency raising an issue to its oversights.
What are, what are the courses of action that contractors have to take when they are found? So for example, for, I believe it was Dragon Eddie that caused a year of delays because they have been having issues. So what happens to these contractors? Are they just continued to given, are they just continued to be paid out until they can do the work?
I would defer to my colleagues at the Parks Department to speak to, to anything regarding non-performance in a contract, in its contracts.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair Wong. Just want to clarify that in the case of Dragon Eddie, you used it as an example. If I recall correctly, they were indicted in late 2021 and established a monitoring agreement after all the steps they took to address the indictments and restore their business integrity. So I'm not sure exactly how long the contracts were on pause for. It was a few months. I don't know whether it was, it was a year, but to answer your question, no. They only get paid if they do contract work, and, you know, after the indictments came out, we paused every type of work except that which was necessary to protect public safety and protect investments in grown trees and things like that. And then, you know, the vendor could not resume performing work on the contract and thus not, not get paid for their contract work until we had pre-established, you know, their integrity through the monitorship and the steps that they took in that regard.
Was there a process where you could have just given that contract to a vendor who did not have these issues?
Thank you, Chair Wong, for, it's a great question. The, yes, there, again, you know, we take each contracting decision very seriously and make sure we're compliant with all relevant laws and rules, including the PBB rules. There are provisions in the PBB rules for replacing a terminated or defaulted contractor. We could have followed those. That was part of our analysis. Unfortunately, the length of time that it takes to re-procur a defaulted contract plus the additional expense that we would have incurred to find a replacement contractor or go to the next lowest bidder or find someone else to step in in the middle of a contract were part of the factors that we evaluated in making this determination.
Thank you, Chair Wong. And now I want to turn it over to Councilmember Salamanca, who's joined us, who has some questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Excuse me, I came running from across the street. So I have questions about your contracts for the forestry department. Some of the issues that I'm encountering with some of my constituents is that there are trees that are encroaching into their property. So we call the Parks Department, oh, I'm sorry, we do a 3-1-1 complaint. They get a service number. The forestry department comes out and says, hey, the tree is healthy, regardless of the fact that the tree is encroaching into your property. And, and so they say, well, if you want to, and we're not going to come and trim, and prune the tree till 2028, when that's the, they have it on a schedule. And so if you want to get this tree pruned, you have to come out, put in permits through the Parks Department, hire your own contractor, prune the tree, and then submit your receipts for the Comptroller's Office for reimbursement.
If there's, if there's damage to the, to home in that case, I think for the Comptrollers in terms of the, in any case, sorry.
So, no, I mean, I, so I just don't agree with this process. And, you know, first, is the forestry department fully funded?
Fully funded?
Funded, do they, are there vacancies in the forestry department? Before I was an elected official, I was a district manager for my community board in the South Bronx. And one of the most frustrations that I had was trying to get more streetlights with the Department of Transportation, which that's, it's very difficult to do. But many times, my streets are dark because our trees are not pruned, and there's a schedule every five to eight years, whatever the schedule is. But now as an elected official, I'm dealing with other issues, which is that trees are encroaching into individuals' properties. There's this one individual who's my neighbor, and whatever the tree was releasing, it was falling into his car, and there were damages to his car. And so we, so we try to help him go through the process of putting in a permit and then trying to get reimbursed for the damages. But the frustration that we have, we love our trees, is that at times these trees need to get pruned, and when we reach out to the forestry department and say, well, we have contracts with, we hire individuals for contracts, and we've run out of the funding that we had in these contracts, and therefore they cannot prune these trees. And so I just want some answers in terms of your forestry department, their contracts, and are they, do they have the manpower and the funds necessary to prune trees?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. I, you know, I think we're talking about maybe two different processes. One is sort of what you might call the preventative, what we call block pruning, and that's the cycle you're referring to. General industry standard for urban forestry is, you know, to prune proactively every seven years. Having said that, we do have in-house staff, climbers and pruners, that can assess and address, you know, usually it's emergent, you know, a dangling limb, something that prevents like a pretty significant health and safety concern. Property damage conflicts with surrounding infrastructure or property, you know, can arise. That's something the agency looks really closely at. Sounds in this instance is that the outcome wasn't what the property owner wanted, which, you know, duly noted. But Commissioner Greenfeld's here to maybe provide a little broader context about our approach.
Thank you for that question, and I think that Matt really sort of covered it. You described the system pretty well, and I know it's sometimes very frustrating to homeowners that they can't get exactly what they want and need, but we do have to address issues that are, are a risk to public safety first.
All right, let's go back. How many contractors do you have to prune trees in the borough of the Bronx? This is a contracting committee, right, in Parks? Yes. How many contractors do you have in the borough of the Bronx to prune trees?
I think our pruning contractor, I think it's one, but we'd have to double check.
So the Bronx has the most, the most green space out of all five boroughs, correct? And you only have one contractor, there's 12 community boards, and you only have one contractor to prune trees?
So the way block pruning works, you know, again, this preventative care, is essentially one-seventh of every community board district gets pruned every year. So think of it as sort of a rotation, a cycle, where one-seventh of each, and that work currently is being conducted through one contract, through one contractor.
Just a jump in, sorry, who is that one contractor in the Bronx?
I don't know offhand. We can find out.
Yeah.
Do we know how much that contractor, that contractor, that contract is worth? Or how much, you know, how?
Specific to the Bronx? Yeah, yeah, I think we need to confirm the number.
All right. I just, I'm also, as a former district manager, I have a good relationship with all 12 of my district managers, and their frustration with dealing with your forestry department is at the highest levels. And their frustration is when they need trees to be pruned, number one, in terms of the schedule. Number two, constantly they're told that there's no more money in the contract so that their trees in their communities can be pruned. And I know that community board, 12, my friend George, George Torres, the district manager, has expressed this, and, and I'm just here to, you know, relay the message. I think that you should review the amount of contracts that you have in the borough of the Bronx. I think one is not enough, and I think that the forestry, the way forestry is managed in terms of addressing our issues, in terms of pruning trees, and making our public safety better, because they're blocking the lights many times, should be reviewed.
Thanks for the feedback, Councilmember. Want to work with you and your team to continue the dialogue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Look, I think Councilmember Salamanca has got a very important point here, and you all know it too, and we discussed this before as well, but it's the delays in the tree maintenance in general and how long it takes, even though I know that there are some industry standards, but the fact of the matter is for a lot of constituents, for a lot of people, that's just too long. And then on top of that, that problem is compounded by these really problematic contractors that simply, you know, it's shocking that the city continues to do business with them. I'll turn it over now to Councilman Vernikov.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple more questions for contracts. How many, how much money set aside for emergency repairs in a fiscal year?
Sorry, emergency repair, sorry, is this for Parks or MOCs?
I'm sorry, Parks.
Okay. Emergency repairs to what? Sorry.
Just in general, emergency repairs, because every time we have issues with emergency repairs, we're constantly told there's no money, we need more funding.
Specific to the realm of maintenance or operations, like just for a park, for a playground, is that what you mean?
Yes.
So, okay, got it, thank you. We, you know, we do have maintenance and operations staff. We have our Borough Trades Teams, or we have another team known as the Citywide Services Division that does provide, those are skilled, like, you know, trades, you know, we have blacksmiths, carpenters, what have you, that can provide what you might call emergency repairs, planks of a boardwalk or, you know, a bench repair, something along those lines. Many times, however, the problems being experienced by a park feature are more significant and often require a full capital project, which, you know, entails redesign and what have you. So there are...
We're always told everything's a capital project. So is there a set amount of funding that's set aside for just emergency repairs?
There is. There is in-house funding for what we might call targeted repairs. I don't know, I don't know the dollar figure, I apologize. But except to note that you're right, that it is finite, as is the universe of repairs that sort of qualify for that, if that makes sense, because the city also has to take into consideration, pardon the expression, but throwing good money after bad, right? Like that, the notion of like a targeted repair, just to bring something online, that can often be done in a short-term circumstance, but most often, more significant, comprehensive repairs are needed, and we need to make sure that we're investing properly and, you know, spending short-term dollars wisely for normally health and safety concerns.
Okay, and I'm gonna do what my colleague, Councilwoman Bautcher, did earlier and ask you, how much do you think it should cost, in your opinion and experience, to demolish a ban shell and build a mini turf field?
I suspect the number ended up being quite high. I presume is where you're headed with this, and as discussed, I personally don't have an opinion about the level of price of bids that contractors should be submitting. I think that's for contractors to submit. They make those decisions. The city has to make the best decision possible based on the contract bids we have before us.
Just $10 million makes sense?
I think that sounds like that was the bid that was submitted. So if that was the lowest responsive responsible bidder, the city then needs to make the decision about whether to continue that or to rebid.
It's just, you know, I think it's awfully high, and we actually did a search online, and, you know, it would cost about, according to our research, $10,000 to $100,000 approximately to demolish a ban shell, and to install a new turf multipurpose field, $2.6 million. So like, I was just wondering if you could possibly reconcile the difference.
Well, perhaps, I mean, I'd be curious to see if the contractors are aware of that research. I mean, they should be submitting bids that reflect the value of the work they intend to do. We have to deal with the bids we receive. Again, we don't walk around with a price gun and assigning value, right? These are bids that are received by the agency.
Yeah, I think we just want to know where this money is going. My last question is, how many enforcement officers does Park employ, if you know? Does Parks employ in New York City?
So there are about... So there are about close to 300 year-round tax levy, that is to say, city-funded Parks Enforcement Patrol Officers, give or take.
Do you know how many in Brooklyn?
It's assigned generally evenly. Uh, I, I, I don't know the exact number, but it equates to roughly 50 per borough, a little lower in Staten Island, and plus we have a, what's called a citywide, uh, strike team, you might, that, that helps focus on other, uh, quality of life concerns. So roughly 50.
Okay. We were told there were 10 in Brooklyn, um, so not sure if it's 10 or it's 50, but I, there's always a shortage in our parks, and we are having a lot of issues in the district, um, enforcement issues, and there's never, there seems to be just never enough enforcement officers. So are you planning to hire more?
Uh, we appreciate, uh, the sentiment. We're very proud of our Parks Enforcement Patrol Officers. We agree, they provide a really important, uniform presence, helping focus on those quality of life concerns. It, just to state the obvious, you know, even if it is 300 citywide, obviously that's, that is relatively finite compared to, you know, 40,000 police officers, what have you. So we see our enforcement efforts as, as working in lockstep with, with PD and other, and other, uh, agencies. In terms of plans to expand, we're in constant dialogue with OMB. Um, you know, I think we are very proud of the work our PEP officers do. Uh, we get a lot of folks, um, uh, reporting quality of life concerns, and we do our best to strategically target those enforcement officers. But that can be a challenge, you know, um, depending on the, the nature of the concerns that are being faced, uh, but we take it really seriously and, um, but admittedly, uh, we're always in dialogue with OMB about potential expansion. That's true.
So any plans to hire more enforcement officers?
I would have to check the latest levels of the most recently adopted budget. I apologize if, um, I'm not aware of an expansion on that front. It was recently expanded about three or four years ago, and I'd, I'd have to double-check in this most recent adopted budget if there were further, uh, expansions in this budget. But in any case, the dialogue continues, and I think we continue-
Yeah, I would encourage, uh, to hire more enforcement officers, and also if you don't mind just to get back to us regarding the number in Brooklyn?
Yeah, we can get back to you on that, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a few more questions. Many of our council colleagues are big fans of Chair Krishnan, because we want to be able to allocate capital funding to nonprofit organizations who can quickly plant street trees. However, because of the city's classification of tree planting as expense rather than capital funding, it makes it difficult to do this. Can Mark, uh, can Parks or MOCs share your perspective on whether council should be able to fund nonprofits to do tree planting through capital funding allocations to the Parks Department? And do your agencies support that change that would allow us for, us to do this, to use capital funding instead of expense for tree planting?
You want to go?
Just, just to clarify, you mentioned due to a restriction. The restriction is on the council allocating capital dollars to nonprofits? Do I understand that correctly? What, sorry, you mentioned, I, I apologize if I misheard.
Yes.
Tree planting broadly speaking is capital eligible, so capital dollars by and large are used for tree planting.
Okay, so I'm guessing that the issue may be that the nonprofits can't take our capital dollars to do the street plant, tree planting? One second. OMB clarifies it as an expense funding.
Uh, there seems to be a disconnect. Uh, tree, street tree planting is definitely capital eligible, we use capital dollars for it, uh, quite robustly. Uh, so, uh, I, I, yeah, I guess I don't know what to say to that. Uh, tree planting is definitely capital eligible, and that is by far the, the general approach to which city tree planting is funded. But there may be a different, I'm guessing that there may be a different concern or issue or question that's about, uh, the council mechanism to provide capital funding to nonprofits. I'm not as deeply familiar, but my understanding is it's, it's for pretty, uh, finite circumstances where that's possible, like a nonprofit's headquarters. It has to be for property they own, and, and, again, I'm not, I shouldn't speak to it, it's the council's process, so.
Okay. We'll, we'll follow up offline then. Parks doesn't allow it to be funded through participatory budgeting because OMB clarif, uh, classifies it as an expense for when we do tree planting, which is a very popular-
Got it, that makes sense. It might not be eligible for the council's participatory budgeting exercise. But to be fair, the council has dictated the terms, like, the capital's exercise concerns capital dollars. That's, that wasn't our determination, that was, so, street tree planting-
Okay, we'll follow up with Chair Krishnan about this offline, to get this worked out. In a Griffin landscaping contract, um, the contract number specifically is QG424M, for Queen Street Tree Planting in Fiscal Year 24, Community Boards 11 to 13, Griffin's landscape, landscaping bid prices listed out were $800 per tree. The Horticulture Society charges $2,800 per tree, so that's $2,000 less than the average that our trusted partners are estimating. Why does the Parks Department, though, charge council offices $3,550 per tree? We're trying to figure out this math problem.
So if we could, yeah, I think we could talk a little bit about average planting costs, that might help set some context here.
Um, uh, thank you for that question. I think you got that backwards. You said we are 800 and the hort is 2,800. That's, that would mean we're less expensive. But we, um, have an average, we calculate the average cost to plant a tree based on the previous fiscal year's cost to us, and it is what it is. Um, uh, right now it's, um, actually under, it's about $2,900 as a citywide average. Each borough is different, um, because it costs less, our bids come back lower in Staten Island, for example, than they do in Manhattan.
So can you just help me understand how the vendor, even though they're not good, Griffin is saying that they need $800 per tree to plant it? Why is the city saying that it's going to be $2,900 per tree on average? Where does the $2,000 go?
Um, I, I'm not quite sure where that $800 comes from, I'd have to-
It's from the contract itself? We can tell you the exact page that it's on?
Are you talking about the planting item for $800? That there is probably a line item that says plant tree, I have no idea what they bid on it, I would have to look that up, but there are many, many line items in a tree planting contract, and then they all sort of, um, kind of come together, you, uh, whether you're cutting out a sidewalk, you're excavating the soil, you're planting the tree itself, the cost of the actual tree is in a separate contract, that's not provided by the contractor mostly. So that's all, all sort of rolls up into an average cost for planting a tree. And in that site, each site costs something different.
Got it. So the breakdown of the $2,900 on the city average of the cost of the tree, plus everything you just named?
Yes, and, um, construction supervision, design, guarantee, and the tree itself, which is not going to be part of the, the, like, what you see as the Griffin's contract. They might give us a, a planting with tree cost, I'm not 100% sure, but the trees are purchased under a different contract, not through-
Okay, got it.
The installation contracts.
My office has shared that when they report trees, which are clear public safety risks, they are deferred to future block pruning cycles, even when 3-1-1 requests show how urgent hazards like dead limbs or branch falls. Why is this, and what process exists to escalate a civic tree or block outside of its scheduled pruning year? And does Parks audit the quality of 3-1-1 responses to ensure they are site-specific and not generic?
So just quickly, there are definitely mechanisms in place for the agency to, to responsively inspect any, any reported safety concern. And so, you know, uh, in many cases, that inspection results that the, that there is not, that there, for example, is not a pressing safety concern, and then, and that the tree can, uh, experience block, routine block pruning at the next appropriate juncture, whenever that, wherever they are in the cycle. Um, but there is definitely in-house, uh, expertise in terms of inspections and tree work that's happening every day, uh, to make sure that we're addressing dangling limbs and, and really, uh, threatening pressing, uh, tree conditions. I don't know if Commissioner Greenfield, if you want to add anything more? Okay. Uh, but yes, there are some outcomes in which an inspection will determine by our, by our, uh, arborists, that there is not a pressing concern. Uh, and in those cases, it is true that the matter would be essentially deferred to the routine block pruning.
We're just very concerned, because in addition to what I just shared, for example, in Woodside, we have reported that when, we have reports from constituents that when cars are parked, blocking Parks crew from pruning trees, these locations are skipped, which could lead to one tree being pruned every 14 years. Why do crew, why do pruning crews not return to complete the work when a tree is missed due to a parked vehicle?
Um, I, thanks for that question, council member. Um, I would love to, uh, follow up with you on the specific location. Certainly that is not our intention. Our intention is for block pruning to prune every tree, um, on that street. So please let us know if for something, some reason it was skipped in that circumstance, and we can follow up.
Okay, so it's part of your protocol to go back if there's a parked vehicle and that tree was missed?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's not my understanding that, that happens, but we, the, the contractor should be doing every tree on the street. And you let, please let us know if that, that has been an issue.
Okay.
E- e- every eligible tree on the street, I should say. They do, they don't always do the small ones, they're specific ones that are eligible.
Okay, we'll send you a list of any trees that we have reported from our constituents, and what is the current average timeline to complete category C and D tree removals in Queens?
Um, thank you for that question. I don't have that information right now. We don't have a timeline for Ds, they're considered, um, negligible risk. Uh, we are, um, do Ds when there are sort of, um, debris left on the ground, that tends to happen. So there's no specific timeline for Ds.
Okay. Why does Parks Department require a request from a council member to act on a, act on confirmed dangerous or dead trees even after 3-1-1 and forester inspections?
I, I don't, I don't think we would characterize it that way whatsoever. Um, can you, I'm sorry, why do we, say again?
Require the council member to act on confirmed dangerous or dead trees even after 3-1-1 and forester inspections?
Our agency is actively inspecting and addressing dan- danger, uh, dangerous concerns, again, every day. Uh, so I, I wouldn't characterize, uh, I wouldn't agree with that characterization.
So you don't need our confirmation before you do?
I think we welcome feedback from all sorts of sources. That could be 3-1-1, that can be staff observation, that can be, uh, a condition that, that has come across through these routine block pruning, they can see a very dangerous condition and make sure that it's addressed. There's a variety of sources, uh, but elected officials as well can certainly, or the local community board, or-
Yeah, however, we make determinations based upon the observations and analysis of our trained staff, not based upon, um, just somebody telling us it should be done. Regardless of whether that's a council member or anybody else.
Okay, good to know. How frequently are Parks data sets like block pruning schedule and tree maps updated, and how accurate are they compared to real-time field conditions?
Um, thank you for that question. Well, everything's on open data, and I, I'm not quite sure how often our, uh, data is updated in open data, but I can find that out for you. So literally everything in our database is on open data. Um, but the most accessible way is to be looking at the tree map online, which actually does now, I think because of, uh, because of the legislation, show, um, the most recent inspection and inspection results. Uh, it is, I believe it's updated daily, I would have to find out for sure, um, if there are any delays, but it should be reflecting what's live in our database.
Okay, we'll follow up, because our constituents are reporting that it is not very accurate or frequently updated. Uh, just so that you're aware, the rough average wait time in Council District 26 for 3-1-1 reports to take action is one and a half to three years for almost any forestry work, which is a very long time. And 70% of Parks cases involve dead trees or branches that are deemed unsafe by the foresters, and we had multiple cases where residents resorted to wrapping caution tape around dangerous trees, highlighting the community's desperation and absence of Parks intervention. Thank you so much, and that is the end of my questioning.
Thank you very much, Chair Wan. Um, I think, um, there are no more questions, uh, for you all. You managed, you survived through it. Um, but thank you all for your testimony. Um, I do think, uh, we're going to hear from the public now too, but I, I do want to say, you know, this is really, you're hearing it from all of us here too, it's really an issue that we've got to, uh, address within the Parks Department, both from, uh, uh, the standpoint of the work and, and the, and the pool of contractors, but also from a perception standpoint too. And I look forward to finding ways to work together to continue addressing this issue. And thank you, MOCs, as well, and look forward to your participation as well, too. Thank you. Uh, now we'll turn it over to public testimony. Uh, I have to read this thing, as I will read. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to recognize. When recognized, you'll have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, which is about, uh, oversight of Parks Department's contracting practices and vendor accountability. We have one panel, and we'll call up everybody, uh, together. Carla Hernandez, Max Barton, and James Versace. One more, uh, on Zoom, right? Okay, uh, so we'll add to the panel two, one more from, uh, virtual.
Okay, that's the other person, okay.
Yeah.
Russell Weaver.
Which is, Russell Weaver, is that who it is?
Yeah.
So we'll do you all, all together.
Did you not pick Chris? Yes, we got him. Yes, we won easy. No, no.
Now, it should be on now, yeah.
All good?
Yep, now we can, you may begin.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Krishnan, Chair Wan, members of the Committees on Parks and Contracts, and everyone who is present here today. My name is Carla Hernandez, and I'm here representing Labor's Local 1010 Lessett. We're an entity of Local 1010 that focuses on contractor advocacy. On behalf of our members and contractors, I want to thank you for holding this joint oversight hearing to shine a light on the troubling procurement practices at the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation, and thank you for all of your thoughtful questions. Earlier this year, we raised serious concerns about Parks awarding millions of dollars in forestry contracts to contractors with criminal convictions, including bribery, fraud, and wage theft. But despite those warnings, obviously little has changed. Public record and testimony today show that Griffin's Landscaping and Dragon Eddie Brothers currently hold multimillion-dollar active contracts with New York City Parks. These are not small incidental awards, they represent significant shares of the department's forestry contracting, totaling in over $50 million in street tree planting work. Yet both of these contractors have principals who've been convicted of serious felony conduct on public work projects. The DPR found these criminals responsible bidders by allowing them to enter into monitoring agreements to receive Parks work, even when one of these contractors was denied work by another city agency. Have these contractors not shown that they are a risk to the city? What is most concerning is that although 30 council members and two borough presidents agreed that the Parks Department should have rescinded Griffin Landscaping's most recent contract, DPR still awarded them the work after the criminal conviction of Glenn Griffin, Griffin's Landscaping's principal. DPR has justified these awards by pointing to the use of independent monitorships. But it's no secret that monitorships do not erase crimes. They represent an outdated system that allows the city to do business with bad actors. Meanwhile, qualified responsible bidders, including several of our own MWBEs, are be, are bidding and being passed over for the same contracts. This is not a question of capacity or a lack of qualified bidders. The reality is that the Parks Department is choosing to reward the same contractors who break the law, instead of giving more responsible contractors and MWBE firms a fair chance. Taxpayer dollars should go to contractors who follow the law and deliver quality work, not those with criminal convictions. We stand ready to work hand-in-hand with the council, the Parks Department, and responsible contractors to create clear rules, ensure accountability, and give union and MWBE firms a fair chance, so our communities can truly thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Max?
Good afternoon, and a quick thank you to all city council members on both the Parks and the Contracts Committees for holding this meeting on the Parks Department contracting practices and vendor accountability, especially Chair Krishnan and Chair Wan. My name is Max Barton, I work as a union representative conducting strategic research for Labor's Local 1010, a union that represents over 2,500 laborers who build New York City's infrastructure. If you've walked on it, driven on it, or landed on it, there's a good chance our members have forked on it. Uh, today my testimony will discuss the city's own data, reflects about the status of Parks Department's bidding process and its results. I will also discuss the potential changes to that bidding process and tree planting contracts distributed by the New York City Department of Parks that could increase consistent contract results, cost savings, and quality, uh, for New York City residents. cost savings, and quality, uh, for New York City residents. I would be happy to answer any questions the committee may have of me. I have reviewed data to counter points made by the New York City Parks Department in its August 1st, 2025 letter addressed to the Council Chair, uh, of the Parks Committee, Shekhar Krishnan. And the August 1st letter, the Parks Department advocates for Griffin Landscaping, a tree contractor whose owner was convicted of committing felonies and is currently serving time in federal prison for fraud, bribery, and bid rigging. Parks has effectively stated this contractor and others like him should be able to bid due to lack of qualified bidders for street, tree, street tree planting work. My testimony will counter that unsupportable notion. It will also de- address, address the abysmal track record of MWBE engagement by the two largest street tree planting contractors who the Parks Department has kept in business with monitoring agreements after criminal convictions against those companies and their principles. Using Checkbook NYC, Passport, and the city record, we were able to delve deeply into the street planting tree contracts. As you know, Checkbook NYC is an online transparency tool provided by the New York City Comptroller's Office that provides data from 2010 until today. While the Parks Department states there are not enough contractors, the capacity, experience, equipment, or labor force to plant trees in New York City, the data shows otherwise. Nearly all Parks Capital projects have forestry work attached to it, including tree planting, pruning, stump removal, and other stimulatory work. A project such as the reconstruction of a multipurpose area in Osborne Park, Brooklyn, that might not sound like a forestry or tree project, but that project has tree removals, tree growth, regulators, tree pruning, nursing for existing trees, and decompaction. All that work is regularly performed by numerous contractors who are qualified bidders, many of who are MWBEs. Our research was summarized in three attached charts, demonstrates to the Parks Department shockingly high reliance on contractors with questionable business integrity. The city records show that 54% of all active street tree planting money is going directly to two contractors with criminal histories. Oh, 54% to two. The consolidation of tree work to Dragon Eddie and Griffin has led to five of the 10 other top tree, street tree planting contractors having no city tree planting work. We believe that less contractors doing the work means less opportunities for other contractors to reduce the city's reliance on these two contractors. And this very reliance that would seem to have created a vacuum that required Parks to seek monitorships for Dragon Eddie Griffin when they should have gotten, when they should have not gotten any more city work. We believe consolidation means slower work and that slower work means less street trees planted. This cycle remains unbroken and it could take up to three years to get a street tree planted in New York City. Survivability of these trees decreases when Parks Department preferred contractors receive tree planting work. There is a clear path to planting higher quality street trees across New York City more efficiently, cost effectively, and with longevity for our communities. Cornell is presenting their study today that shows projects completed by well-trained skilled union workers are finished faster and lead to higher tree survival rates. MWB utilization by the Parks Department preferred constru-, preferred contractors is abysmal. The street tree planting contracts reviewed show that contractors with criminal histories and wage theft claims have the worst MWB utilization. 15 years of forestry contracts reveals there are at least nine non-WEB general contractors awarded work that never gave MWB subcontractors any work, not one dying. City records show that these nine contractors received more than $130 million worth of work on 84 contracts. Separately, Griffin's Landscaping and Dragon Eddie Brothers received 59 contracts worth over $163 million. Yet less than 3% of that work went to MWBEs. This lack of opportunity for MWB subcontractors has effectively been rewarded by the Parks Department since these two subcontractors continue to receive a majority of street, street, street tree planting work even though they have never improved their MWB utilization or have ever come close to the city's 30% MWB gold. Local 1010 is proud to have a diverse membership that represents the diversity of the city of New York as well as a partnership with over 65 MWB signatory contractors. Many of, many who have met and can meet the Parks Department's street tree planting contracting needs. We hope this hearing highlights this historically bad procurement outcomes in the street tree planting program and that the Parks Department and council can work together with Local 1010 and other advocates for our city to plant trees faster, with greater survivability, and cost savings to the taxpayers, while also providing career opportunities to the working class of New Yorkers. Thank you for your time and consideration of this testimony and for letting me go over the time limit so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Do you want to turn to Zoom? We have, uh...
Russell Weaver.
That's right, Russell. Thank you. You may, you may begin.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, and thank you to both committees for hosting this session today and for the chance to participate in it. My name is Russell Weaver and I'm the Research Director at the Buffalo office of the Cornell University School of Industrial and Labor Relations, the ILR School. Together with my colleague, Dr. Anne Marie Brady of the Cornell ILR School's Worker Institute, and in partnership with the Local 1010 Laborers, Employers, Cooperation, and Education Trust, I've been engaged in a months-long empirical investigation of recent tree planting contracts issued by the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation. And I want to begin by saying just how much I appreciate the city's, um, and Parks commitment to providing the public with rich, high-quality, and well-documented data on all municipal activities through the New York City Open Data Program. I'd also like to express appreciation for the city's and Parks' evident commitment to tree planting and to tree care. Um, your team sets a high standard that cities across New York and the nation would do well to emulate. Um, and on that note, I'll briefly describe the work that Dr. Brady and I have been doing, and I'll summarize some of our key findings to date, um, that I think will be relevant to this hearing. Our full report will be available for public distribution later this fall and will ensure that a member of the panel, um, will forward the final documents to these committees when it is available. In short, our report evaluates measurable outcomes from recent tree planting contracts, specifically those that have been issued between fiscal years 2021 and 2024. So, right after the first year of the COVID pandemic, up to and including the last fiscal year that's been finalized. In total, there were 43 DPR tree planting contracts that we identified as part of the study and were included in the analyses. Of those contracts, 36 were associated with competitive bidding processes and bid history data that we were able to obtain through the New York City Passport Central website. 12 of those 36 contracts, so about a third, were awarded to Local 1010 firms and the remaining two-thirds were awarded to non-local 1010 firms. Drawing on street tree planting data from...
Thank you. Your time has expired. You can continue and conclude your testimony.
Oh, sorry. Um, what we found in the analyses of those contracts is that, um, of about 8,000 trees that were planted, um, those that were performed under Local 1010 contracts were 1.25 times more likely to survive, to not be rated as dead. Um, these were highly statistically significant results. 76% of those trees performed under Local 1010 contracts were rated as excellent compared to only 61% of trees awarded under other contracts. Um, and the density of 311 complaints made related to DPR unsafe sidewalks or defective sidewalks in the year 2025 around these contract areas, um, was statistically significantly less in spaces where Local 1010 firms performed the work relative to all others. And so based on these findings, as well as their compatibility and connectivity to literature, longstanding literature on union advantages in providing construction labor, um, our study concludes that efforts to apply prevailing union standards for work quality wages, benefits, worker training, and so on, um, has the potential to save trees with higher survivability. Time, trees were planted roughly two weeks faster under Local 1010 contracts, and ultimately money, um, since trees are surviving longer in New York City. So thank you for, um, allowing me to go over. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. I have a few questions. I don't know if there's, um, more testimony or? Sure. Why don't you, why don't you go for it for the panel afterwards?
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, Chairman Krishnan and Chairwoman Wan, and to members of the Committee on Parks and Contracts. My name is James Versace. I'm counsel to Local 1010 and I'm sure you would be shocked to know that they invited me to speak here today, but they've asked me to be here more because of my experience as a former Assistant Attorney General at the New York State Attorney General's Office, where I was responsible for, for procurement reform enforcement and also prevailing wage enforcement for nearly a decade. Um, one of the issues that's come up today is that, uh, 1010 has continued to monitor, and as you've rightly looked at, the issues involving, um, unscrupulous contractors being awarded monitoring agreements by the city of New York. And we're, are, we, I'm going to present to you a lot more legal technical, uh, testimony in my written, um, submission, but what we wanted to highlight today was address what the real problem is here today. Monitorship agreements were created by the Department of Investigation to address a very specific concern arising in the 1990s when I started prosecuting cases. They were utilized by DOI and law enforcement to root out corrupt contractors largely affiliated with organized crime. What they've been utilized now preemptively by agencies is to avoid the analysis of what is business integrity. And in both of the cases involving Griffin and Dragon Eddie, and I don't think the department or Mox addressed this today, is that monitorships were given before the business integrity analysis was completed. There is a process to conduct that integrity review and they've skipped it. Because what happened is these monitorship agreements were given to them before they even bid on another project. We understand that contractors who were bid and receive projects and then get in trouble, it is necessary probably for them to finish their contracts, right? There, but the problem here is that they're preemptively given, and I apologize, may I just complete? They're preemptively big, given the monitorship agreements and that removes the ability of the city's contracting officer, procurement officer, which is the director of Mox, to receive a request to allow a monitorship agreement to be entered. So what's happened here is that there is a lack of ability for the city or agencies themselves to find somebody non-responsible because they're being told they're responsible. The remedy therefore for, we suggest for, for the council is to tell agencies and Mox what is business integrity. More importantly, what is not business integrity. And what that means is that we, this council could adapt legislation that would revise the procurement, um, sections of the city charter under Section 311 to find that if you have a monitoring agreement or you commit certainly, certain felony conduct, like you've highlighted here today, you cannot have business integrity and you would not be awarded contracts. I thank you for your time today and your consideration in allowing us to run over.
Thank you so much for your testimony. So just wanted to, I had a couple of questions to ask, but I wanted to clarify, um, the last point you made about preemptively being given, uh, or deemed having a business integ- can you, can you just explain that one more time? So that's happening before these entities reward of the contracts?
Correct. So these were longstanding bidders, so they had ongoing contracts when they got into criminal violations. What happened was as part of the plea deal that dealt with Dragon Eddie, let's start there. Dragon Eddie is convicted of a multimillion dollar, uh, insurance fraud scheme on city public work projects. As part of the plea deal, they negotiate with DOI, somehow with Parks, to get a monitoring agreement to complete Parks work only. And they were debarred in that same plea agreement, voluntarily debarred from DDC work, which would mean that they were debarred potentially or would be found non-responsible from all other city agency work. So the monitoring agreement, an agency is not going to find somebody non-responsible because they don't want to face an Article 78 challenge or a PPP challenge if they already have a monitoring agreement. Because a monitoring agreement under the PPP rules presumptively finds you to be quote unquote rehabilitated. It's one of the key tools that the city can use to rehabilitate a contractor. And what the Parks Department didn't address today, and you asked many, many times, is you asked what specifically made these contractors so special that they needed to be given this work? And that question wasn't answered specifically today, I would submit to you. Because there is a section under the PPP rules that says the agency has to engage in the process to say what is special and that that will allow them to potentially get a monitoring agreement. The process is turned backwards here. You're giving a monitoring agreement so you don't have to go through the process that's set forth in the PPP rules.
And then the monitoring agreement not only kind of, you know, presumes or presumptively deems you eligible, but I guess it also some confers or it's validate, preemptive validation that you're also a specialized entity too?
Potentially. I think it gives them both means to make that argument.
Got it.
But more importantly, city agencies want to deliver products and we respect that. And, and we know that the procurement process and the deliverables can take time. So they don't want to engage in litigation. I think, uh, Councilmember Wan made this point, which is the risk adverse issue is, is twisted on its head here. Agencies don't want to get sued for making a responsibility determination because it delays projects. But then they get a monitoring agreement. They're never going to find someone non-responsible who has a monitoring agreement because it presumptively, in a court of law, the court's going to say, but they have a monitoring agreement from DOI. How could they possibly be non-responsible? So as long as age, uh, contractors like this, these that we're highlighting, get monitoring agreements, it is my submission to you based on my 25 years of experience, no one's ever going to be found non-responsible.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I see. Uh, and also, uh, just to, um, understand too, is it a case that, uh, in these areas where both companies received bid awards, there were other union contracting firms that had also submitted bids as well? Is that correct?
Yes. Uh, we'll just go for Griffin's Landscaping first because that one's off the top of my head, I know. Um, second place for two of the contracts were JR Cruz. Uh, they're one of, uh, three contractors that finished street tree planting contracts in 2025, but have none right now. Um, so they were knocked out. Uh, they, they've done $100 million contracts. So to say that they can't plant a tree is, uh, because they're not special enough or whatever they said, is, um, outrageous. Uh, another one is HTC Landscaping. Uh, they have a couple of tree planting contracts right now. Um, they're, uh, from Long Island, but it seems like they do good work and they use, uh, Long Island union labor. I think some 731 guys too.
And as you mentioned, these contractors, before they were knocked out and lost the bid, they had carried significant contracts with the Parks Department before for street trees?
Uh, yes. Uh, HTC is active right now, but JR Cruz is, is totally knocked out.
And both of them have the capability to do this work?
Uh, yes, they both, uh, have done street tree planting projects before. They've completed them, um, on budget.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, this is a question also for, for Russell, I think, or for anyone on the panel too. Uh, I've read through the, uh, ILR report, um, that, that Russell testified, and I just wanted to be clear these, the firms here that were union shops, um, that had done the work in an efficient manner, they were doing this work all across New York City, correct?
Correct. Sorry, I was still on mute. Yes, sir.
Sure. Across the city. And on what contracts? Were they Parks Department contracts? Were they other, uh, contracts or what?
They were Parks Department contracts. Um, I, I can provide a list of all of the, uh, specific contract numbers that we looked at.
Got it. And so in your opinion, these are firms that could, they're already contractors with the city. They've already been vetted. So increasing their contracts or expanding their scope to include the street trees, in your opinion, would that be a significant lift by the Parks Department as part of a way to expand the pool of applicants here?
The, the data certainly suggests that. So the contracts, um, that were awarded to the Lesit 1010 firms, um, operated faster, so they planted trees quicker. Um, they were not significantly different in terms of their actual contract award price from non-local 1010s. So, um, effectively the cost was about the same on the contracts when you look at the medians. Um, and they were done, uh, again, it seems with more efficiency in terms of how they are rated right now in the TreePoint data set in the DPR system. So, um, we see increased survivability. We see quicker planting, um, cost effectiveness, and, and good long-term outcomes.
And to anyone's knowledge on the panel, um, have you all had, or have, have, have any of the companies, to your knowledge, had conversations with the Parks Department about, um, why they weren't considered for street tree contacts? Why they were, you know, the bids that lost out in the end?
Counselor, the, the concern is that most contractors will not have direct dialogue with an agency. There's a prohibited period when they can speak with them. Um, and once they lose the contract, we don't think there's much, um, feedback as to why you didn't get it. Uh, what's happened in these cases with Griffin and Dragon Eddie is because they were the lowest deemed responsible bidder, there's no conversation beyond that. The only way we would get to the next second or third bidders would be for the agency to find one of those vendors to be non-responsible.
I see, I see. But the bottom line is the notion that the work is specialized, uh, just doesn't seem consistent with the fact that there are a number of other Parks contractors that do this work. Am I right?
Uh, we would agree with that statement, uh, especially in the fact that the PPP rules themselves require the echo of an agency to make a determination about why a contractor is specialized enough when they're evaluating business integrity. We have foiled and requested copies of the modern reports and to get additional information about those determinations. And we can testify today that that information has not been provided to us to answer that question. It's a question that only Parks can answer it.
Got it. Thank you for your testimony. Chair, I don't know if you have any questions or? Thank you very much, this panel. Really appreciate it on Zoom as well. And our final witness is, uh, Christopher Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Krishnan. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I just want to ask, uh, the Chair Julie Wong from Contracts to support writer's law. And I want her to issue an open apology to everybody out there that is telling truth about writer's law about the... about the aspect of Rider's Law is that it's a land grab that is done by the developers to remove the horse stables. It's not about a land grab, but I support the bill and I hope she supports the bill too. I understand there's unions involved, or something like that, but she slandered everybody on Pix 11, on Dan Mariano about, I know about Rider's Law, but that, I know, I know it's kind of off topic, but...
It is off topic, Mr. Johnson.
All right, so let's get, let's go for it. Sorry, let's go for it. I am calling the city council to, with the help of the Contracts Chair, to really look into the cop city situation. Because I know that you, Mr. Krishnan, just got that veto overwritten to where the NYPD is not allowed to criminalize the street vendors inside the parks. But the Parks Department law enforcement people are criminalizing themselves. So I hope that you and Julie find a way to really have a hearing about that, about what happened, what's up with the Parks Department. Because, yeah, the NYPD won't be able to help out, to criminalize the vendors, especially they go inside the parks. But what about the Parks Department? Because they be outside, the Parks Department be outside City Hall, giving these guys tickets like hotcakes. You know that. So you should have a hearing, like another hearing with the Contracts Committee in relating to this test situation. So that's my advice. That's my advice. And thank you so much, and enjoy your day.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Seeing no other witnesses, I want to thank everyone who came out for today. We appreciate your testimony. Thank you to the Parks Department and Mox for your testimony as well. And we look forward to continuing to work on this important issue together. Thanks, everyone. This hearing is now closed.